Good evening, I'd like to call the Board of Education Business Meeting to order. Mrs. Jazenski, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Ms. Hellreich?
Here.
Mr. Pearjeany?
Here.
Ms. Sobel?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a moment. Thank you. Please stand in. Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, a nation endowed with invisible liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to make your presentations?
Sure. So, we're getting to the end of the school year. It's very exciting for the two of us, but no, for everyone, we're getting excited. Upcoming, we have a bunch of different award events, such as, on the 21st of May, we have the awards night for its seniors and a couple other underclassmen as well that get awards at that one. And then, at the honor court ceremony is in school on the 24th in the morning. That's for seniors, and then there's also some extra awards at that one. We have the senior picnic at Holiday Hill on the 30th, which we're all super excited for, I think. B1 day, which is planned by, like, completely planned by students, is coming up on June 3rd, so it's something that I'm looking forward to, we're looking forward to. And AP exams are just finishing up. Ian took one this morning, but today's the last, the last day is tomorrow of the AP exams. And then, a couple weeks ago, the Ryan T. Lee Foundation had hosted their leadership conference, which is led by the peer health class at the high school. Over 400 students from about 60, or about six schools attended. The emphasis was on leadership and community outreach, and the students listened to guest speakers and participated in activities throughout the whole day, which was awesome.
And in the sports world, it's championship season right now, so there's some really good news. So, all of the contests that are going to be happening that are, you know, really big and important as far as playoffs go, a lot of the ones that are on the turf field are going to be livestreamed online. They set up a website, and it does cost a little bit of money that goes towards our sports, so they'd be really considerate if you did want to watch it live. The link is NFHSnetwork.com. If you, if you need me to repeat that later, I'd be happy to do so. I also think it's pretty cool to watch them in person and go and buy tickets, so that's also a great way to see sports. College sports recruitment seminar in April, that happened recently for juniors and underclassmen who are interested in playing sports in college, you know, and as a way to, you know, boost your chances of getting in, and so on. And then, going into playoff season, like I said, our sports teams are really, really good this year, and they have been throughout the year. So, baseball is again doing very, very well. They're number one in the state, and, you know, I think, yeah, and today, I think I saw that they were, they'd gone like 18 wins straight without a loss. Boys volleyball is currently fourth in the state as a softball, and girls lacrosse is fifth in the state. So, all of our sports teams are doing very well. And lastly, one of the events that a lot of the sports teams volunteer at is the Ion, Ion Bank Half Marathon. I don't know if any of you ran that or participated in it, but almost 200 students, a lot from the sports teams together, you know, run the different water stations and the logistics. So, almost 200 students from the Cheshire community participated in that, which is a great showing, and especially as representation for the sports teams. And that's all we have for today. Any questions?
I don't have any. Anyone have any questions for our student reps? Thank you. You're here again next, one more meeting, correct?
Uh, yeah.
Next, in June, right?
Next week.
Okay. I believe so.
One more meeting, okay. Thank you. If you could stay, stay right where you are for a moment, please. Thank you. But thank you for your presentation. Mr. Solin?
This is a special opportunity. It's playoff season, but it's also kind of award season, as Ally alluded to as well. And tonight is a wonderful opportunity for our Board of Education to recognize some outstanding students in our school system. So, Ally and Ian, if you don't mind coming over, but I'd also want to welcome up from Dodd Middle School, Juliana Tyler and Anna Pichu. Come on over, guys. So, each year, the Connecticut Association of Boards of, come on over here, guys. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education gives us the opportunity to recognize four very special students in our school system. And they ask for schools to nominate students through their principal based on their ability to exhibit the following traits: a willingness to take on challenges, a capability to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment mirroring a lot of the skills necessary to be a successful Board of Education member and a leader in your community. So, it is my honor on behalf of our Board of Education to recognize you guys as our Cheshire Public Schools Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Leadership Honorees. Congratulations. Juliana?
Congratulations. I think I'm better if I step forward a little bit.
Ready? That smiles. One more. Okay, got it. Thank you. You guys might appreciate it. Congratulations.
Kelly Lenz, can you join us?
Good evening. I am very proud tonight to, to present to you Regine Ulette, who is a, a former student of Cheshire Adult Education, who completed his GED in this last year. And he was honored by the Connecticut Association for Adult and Continuing Education as one of their Adult Learners of the Year. Cheshire Adult Education student Regine Ulette was selected through an extremely competitive nomination and selection process as one of six Case Learner of the Year Award winners for 2019. Adult education programs from all over the state of Connecticut nominate their best and brightest for this Scholarship Fund Award, and this year, Cheshire is proud to announce its first-ever award winner. Regine was honored at a special recognition ceremony during a luncheon at the annual case conference held at the end of May. Regine Ulette is truly a Cheshire Adult Education success story. His personal journey to earn his high school diploma and the career path he's chosen is inspiring. Regine Ulette's story, like many adult learners, began in his early teens when he left school in the ninth grade to work for his brother in a family-run construction business. He found his calling in carpentry. He learned the trade and, over the years, worked for another brother before opening his own construction company in 2003. Precision and quality have been accurate descriptors of his work in all facets of new construction and remodeling. Not only did Regine love the work, he found that he had a knack for sharing his knowledge and skills with new carpenters. So, Regine decided to apply for a teaching position as a carpentry instructor in one of Connecticut's vocational high schools. Although he was offered the position, he was unable to accept it because he lacked a high school diploma. This experience motivated Regine to go back to school, and in 2017, Regine enrolled in Cheshire Adult Education and began the challenging process of earning his GED. From the beginning, Regine was focused on the end goal and never wavered in his dedication to fulfilling his dream. He rarely missed a class and kept at it, one night after another, until he passed all four GED tests and received his diploma in May 2018. With diploma in hand, Regine reapplied for a teaching position in the vocational school system. After interviewing at Goodwin Technical School in New Britain, Regine was hired to teach carpentry to ninth and 10th graders. With his practical experience and business savvy, his grit and determination, there is no doubt that his high school students will learn more than they might anticipate. Regine Ulette is an outstanding role model for his students and an inspiration to his fellow adult learners. Please help me congratulate Regine Ulette. And I would be, I would be very remiss if I did not also honor his teacher. Gail Bendel is an outstanding educator and has brought many GED students across the finish line. So, Regine, I'd like to offer you this, this certificate. It reads, "The Cheshire Board of Education awards this certificate to Regine Ulette, Cheshire Adult Education GED student, in recognition for receiving the Connecticut Association for Adult and Continuing Education case, Adult Learner of the Year for 2019." Congratulations.
Thank you. Really tall. Smiles. One more. Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm just glad you're here. I'm proud. Yes. Mr. Maciana has a, some awards to also give out. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, it's my distinct honor and pleasure to recognize two of our employees, both from central office, with special awards. The first is Michael Papa, who's our manager of technology. Mike, if you want to come on up and join me. Mike is being recognized this evening for earning his Certified Education Technology Leader designation, CETL. To earn the CETL, Mike had to demonstrate experience in the education technology field by passing a two-part exam based on the 10 skill areas in the, I have to read this, Consortium for School Networking's Framework of Essential Skills. This is a big deal, to be able to earn this designation and to keep his CETL. Mike has to complete 60 hours of professional development every three years, which we are confident he will do as our technology professional. I'll tell you a little bit more about Mike. He started his career with our schools in March of 1977.
97.
What did I say?
77.
Oh, sure. Sorry. So, it's only 22 years. Thank you, Mike. Mike's always correcting me, so he knows what to listen for. And he's literally worked his way from the bottom of the organization because he started as the coordinator of media services in the basement of Chapman Elementary School. He was then moved up from the basement and into the permanent portable trailer at Chapman, which was not an improvement.
Not great.
That, when I started working here, that's where I met you. That was not great, and we, we have scrapped that portable trailer since then. And then, Mike joined us over in central office when he was promoted into his current role as technology manager. So, tonight, we thank Mike, first of all, for his many years of service to the school district. We thank him for being instrumental and continuing in his dedicated efforts to improve technology services for our students and staff. And mostly, we congratulate Mike and applaud the time and energy he, he committed to earning the CETL designation and for exemplifying what it means to be a lifelong learner.
Congratulations. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. One more. Okay. All right. Thanks. I just wanted to, just take a quick moment. I wanted to thank Vin Maciana, who's been a huge supporter of technology and me professionally, and Jeff. Prior to them, Greg Floria was a huge supporter of technology. Members of the board and also members of the council that have worked together to support technology through our capital budget, as well as our regular budget. 22 years, you can imagine, I've seen a lot of changes in technology. We've moved things forward, and everyone knows how proud I am of what we're able to offer the students of Cheshire. I think we offer one of the greatest networks and one of the greatest technology experiences for our students. And people that know me and work with me know that I'm really passionate about what I do, sometimes to a fault, and I always do it for the students. And I think that we, we offer them a, a great experience, thanks to, to everyone's efforts, especially the people on my team. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Barbara Jacobs, who's our supervisor of support services that I work very closely with, that's instrumental in our, in our technology efforts. So, thanks, everyone.
Okay. I'm going to ask Michelle, Ms. Legel, to come and join me. And as she comes up, I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about Michelle. She's secretary to the curriculum office. You okay?
I was running.
Okay. And she's being recognized this evening for the leading role she has taken in helping our employees become better bowlers, longer walkers with more endurance, who are thinner and healthier. So, Michelle has been a lead motivator and coach for all the various district-wide employee wellness events since 2016, and I'm just going to name a few. First is, she was responsible for several seasons of bowling signups and league updates. And, you know, while Michelle was, was running that for us, we grew from three lanes and 18 bowlers to 18 lanes and 48 bowlers, and, you know, that's, that was a dream that came true for me, when we got 48 people, you know, from the schools participating, and that league is still going strong. Michelle also spearheaded three Biggest Loser contests since 2016. Following the Biggest Loser contest, we had four Maintain/Don't Gain contests. We had five step challenges. We had a Biggest Loser step challenge, and my favorite was a pizza step challenge. So, you were competing for a pizza, not walking with a pizza, just in case you were wondering. Beyond the actual accomplishments in conducting all of these activities, which takes a lot of time and effort, Michelle is always encouraging our staff to go beyond the events we offer, to take fitness challenges such as the Cheshire Half Marathon and 5K, and the Warrior-New England. I don't know, has anyone actually done that?
Leslie and I have done it.
Gutsy. If you don't know what that is, look it up. It's, it's not easy. The most important point to make is that Michelle works really hard at encouraging, inspiring our employees in all the district events, which has resulted in very high participation rates, you know, of more than 100 employees each time, which is very, very good. She sends us articles that are inspirational, pictures, quotes, informative articles on topics such as counting macronutrients, building strength, cranking out cardio was my favorite.
I could see.
Yes, yeah. I have some work to do still. One of my favorite little pictures and quotes that she sent is, you know, somebody running it, and it says, "You'll get a lot more compliments for working out than you will for sleeping in," although sleeping in is way better. Michelle began working for our schools in, in July of 2012 as a substitute secretary in the Cheshire High School Athletic Department before being hired into the curriculum office role she works in now. Michelle worked at MetLife, and Vin Maciana likes to take credit for Michelle's hire as he claims to have coaxed her into applying for a position. Who wrote this? So, tonight, we thank Michelle for her hard work and dedication in improving the health and well-being of our employees, in addition to performing her curriculum office duties professionally and successfully, for always smiling, and for being a health coach and cheerleader extraordinaire. Thank you, Michelle.
I'm going to take Mike's lead and, and say something, because a successful wellness program isn't just one person. I really have to thank my coworkers, especially the ones in central office, who are always there when I'm sounding off like a new program, and definitely the administrators, because without them, there would be no program. They're the ones who gave me the go-ahead, and I really appreciate it, and our employees appreciate it. So, thank you.
Moving to the business part of the, the boring business part of the meeting. Ms. Harrigan, do you have a motion for us?
Sure. Let's approve some minutes, shall we? I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held April 4th, 2019.
Thank, thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Grippo? Any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, the motion is that the Board of Edu, Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held April 4th, 2019. All in favor? Okay. Any abstentions? Three. Okay. Four in favor, three abstentions. Thank you. Ms. Hellreich, do you have a motion?
I do, Madam Chair. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held May 2nd, 2019.
Thank you so much. May I have a second? Mr. Grippo? Any comments, corrections, questions? No. Seeing none, the motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held May 2nd, 2019. All in favor? Five in favor. Any abstentions? Two abstentions. Thank you. And Ms. Sobel?
Yes. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held May 8th, 2019.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Harrigan? Any questions, corrections, comments? Seeing none, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held May 8th, 2019. All those in favor? Oh, it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Pearjeany, do you have any correspondence?
Madam Chair, I don't have any correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Superintendent Solan, do you have your report for us?
Thank you very much. The only thing I, I would share real quickly is, I know we've issued a, a press release, but I want to congratulate Cheshire High School. They were recently recognized by great schools and the governor for their capacity to support students to find success after Cheshire High School with their college acceptance, and then the, the sustained rate that we have of students matriculating onto their sophomore year. Part of that acknowledgement was also the success that our students have had on the SAT this year. We had a 6% increase in math and 5% in English and reading. So, that would, that would be it for my reports. I know we have a lot of other business items, so I'm just going to keep it brief, and that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Hellreich, do you have a motion on the consent calendar?
I do, Madam Chair. I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the consent calendar as presented. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Grippo?
If you would indulge me just for a moment. I know several people had asked to speak this evening under general business, and I was wondering if I could make a, a motion to amend the agenda to move public comment up from number eight to right now, as number six or number seven.
Are you making a formal motion?
I would like to make a formal motion to amend the agenda to move public comment from position eight to position seven, because I know we have a lot of business tonight. And just as a matter of general courtesy, I thought that if people had to come to speak, that they should be allowed before we get to the lengthy business that we have tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Pearjeany? Any, any discussion? Ms. Harrigan?
Is there something specifically that people have come to talk about that I don't know about?
Yes, you're fine.
I was just asked, the people informed me that they would like to speak tonight, and so I thought it'd be as a general courtesy that they could speak before we have the general business, because I know this will probably take potentially several hours. And so, before, to have them sit here all night, I thought it'd be, it's a general courtesy to have them speak now instead of having them wait.
Any other comments, Ms. Hellreich? Thank you, Madam Chair. On most nights, I would vote in favor of this motion, but tonight, I am severely under the weather and was planning on leaving tonight's meeting after the personnel committee, and for that reason, I will be voting no on this motion.
Any other discussion? So, the motion is to move the audience public comment agenda item to right now, as opposed to after the committee reports and the other business. If, okay. Okay. All in favor? Three in favor, opposed. The motion does not pass. Ms. Harrigan, do you have a curriculum committee report?
This report is for the Curriculum Committee meeting on Monday, April 8th, at Homiston, the Homiston Boardroom. We had some informational items on the, the first one is on the Language Assessment System, or the LAS LINKS test results, and Marlene Solano spoke about the Language Assessment System test results given to non- or limited English-speaking students. There were 53 students who took the assessment in Cheshire Public Schools. Speaking and listening and writing skills were assessed, and this test is a state requirement and gives the school district information to help inform instructional practices for the students. Then, Ms. Solano also presented the results of the Otis Lennon School Ability Test, the OLSAT. The test contains verbal and nonverbal scores and is designed as a group assessment measuring both verbal, as in verbal reasoning and comprehension, and nonverbal. Again, gives us some information to help determine instructional needs. Then, we got some information on the Smarter Balance Assessment and the NGSS Letter to Parents. That, the letter was, informs parents that students in grades five and eight will take the NGSS Science Assessment. That was for May 16th and 17th. This is the first year the science test will be given. We talked about the Geometry Resource Selection Committee, and Ms. Solano, again, spoke that she is working with CHS teachers and Dodd teachers to, to look at the geometry textbooks, a new, a new textbook selection, and I believe that's on our agenda for the next Curriculum Committee meeting next week. And finally, we discussed the school day SAT schedule for grade 11.
On most nights, I would vote in favor of this motion, but tonight, I am severely under the weather, and was planning on leaving tonight's meeting after the personnel committee, and for that reason, I will be voting no on this motion.
Any other discussion? So, the motion is to move the audience, public comment, agenda item to right now, as opposed to after the committee reports and the other business. If, okay. Okay. All in favor? Three in favor, opposed. The motion does not pass. Ms. Harrigan, do you have a curriculum committee report?
I do. This report is for the curriculum committee meeting on Monday, April 8th, at Homiston, the Homiston Boardroom. We had some informational items on the, the first one is on the Language Assessment System, or the LAS LINKS test results, and Marlene Solano spoke about the Language Assessment System test results given to non- or limited English-speaking students. There were 53 students who took the assessment in Cheshire Public Schools. Speaking and listening and writing skills were assessed, and this test is a state requirement and gives the school district information to help inform instructional practices for the students. Then, Ms. Solano also presented the results of the Otis Lennon School Ability Test, the OLSAT. The test contains verbal and nonverbal scores, and is designed as a group assessment measuring both verbal, as in verbal reasoning and comprehension, and nonverbal. Again, gives us some information to help determine instructional needs. Then, we got some information on the Smarter Balance Assessment and the NGSS Letter to Parents. The letter was, informs parents that students in grades five and eight will take the NGSS Science Assessment. That was for May 16th and 17th. This is the first year the science test will be given. We talked about the Geometry Resource Selection Committee, and Ms. Solano again spoke that she is working with CHS teachers and DOD teachers to look at the geometry textbooks, a new textbook selection, and I believe that's on our agenda for the next curriculum committee meeting next week. And finally, we discussed the school day SAT schedule for grade 11, and the information that went out to parents on that. For new business, we had an out-of-country field trip request. DOD science teacher Claire Gonzalez and social studies teacher Kristen Giuliano presented an overview of the middle school Costa Rica field trip to the committee. This is believed to be the first out-of-country trip under consideration for the middle school, and we had a really nice presentation by these two teachers. And so, with that, I would like to bring to the full board a motion that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the participation of DOD middle school students in the educational field trip to Costa Rica, San Jose, Arinal Region, Monteverde, Central Pacific Coast, from April 10th, 2020 to April 18th, 2020, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Cheshire Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Do I have a second? Ms. Sobel? Any questions about this discussion? Ms. Hellreich?
Not really a question, but more of a statement. And I spoke to Mr. Solon about this earlier, but there will be somebody looking into whether any vaccinations or shots or precautions need to be taken for various little vermin and bugs that there might be down in Costa Rica.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the participation of DOD middle school students in the educational field trip to Costa Rica, San Jose, Arinal Region, Monteverde, Central Pacific Coast, from April 10th, 2020 to April 18th, 2020, with the understanding that there is no cost to the Cheshire Board of Education. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Ms. Sobel, do you have a finance committee report?
I do, Madam Chair. We have a, well, I'll start with the financial report. With two months remaining in the 2018-19 fiscal year, we are projecting to end the year in balance. We have been managing through negative variances in our special education and maintenance accounts by reducing expenditures primarily in our non-payroll accounts for classified salaries. With two months remaining, we've updated our payroll forecast, and we're projecting to have a net negative balance of $110,000, due primarily to overages for instructional assistance, support staff, and drivers. These overages are going to be partially offset by lower-than-budgeted wage costs for secretarial and maintenance staff. For instructional programs, the net negative variance as of April 30th remains steady at $338,000. The negative variances, again, we've talked about this previously, but it's primarily attributable to the unforeseen overages in special education accounts for tuition outplaced totaling $525,000, and people services totaling $138,000. The overages in the outplaced tuition and people services accounts are partially offset by reductions in the instructional program accounts for staff training, instructional supplies, textbooks, and software and library books, periodicals, and media supplies. Operations and maintenance accounts reflect a net negative $42,500 as of month-end. These overages are partially offset by savings in heat and energy costs and lower-than-budgeted costs for snow removal. We have had a budget freeze, a budget overtime and hiring freeze that was instituted by Superintendent Solon December 13th, 2018. This has been in addition to extending the previously district-wide limitation on all schools and departments not to expend more than 60% of their budget allocated for non-payroll accounts. I am very pleased that for May, we have released an additional 20% of the non-payroll budget so that we can make necessary purchases for our schools and complete maintenance projects across the district on a judicious basis.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions about that part of the report? I guess you can continue. Thank you.
Mr. Maciana, do you want to give the medical benefits?
Yes. Good evening. Very briefly, the board members do have the medical benefits update as of April. You'll see, if you look at the claims from January through April, they are starting to increase, but April's claims were $738,000. That's not too bad, and you'll see that we dipped into the reserve fund balance by $11,279 this month. We end the month with a balance of $3,882,983 in the trust fund, so that gives us 5.36 claim months in reserve. We have two months to go, and I do expect the claims to ratchet up a bit, but hopefully they stay below the $850,000 level, and so we'll end at around five months of claims in reserve. I cross my fingers as I say that. Thank you.
Thank you. I keep churning off the microphone. I don't know why.
I was going to give a little talk about our meeting. The finance committee held a meeting last night. Last night, the finance committee had the unenviable task of looking at our recommended 2019-2020 budget and deciding where to reduce it by over $950,000. We were joined in this endeavor by other members of the board, as well as Mr. Maciana and Superintendent Solon, and I'd like to thank them for the time spent putting together and reviewing different scenarios in the days leading up to the meeting. In the end, the finance committee is passing along to the full board a motion that makes the necessary budget reductions, but also includes funds for the part, a part-time special ed teacher, a dedicated school security person, and a third school psychologist. These additions are possible because of a lot of experience on behalf of our staff and administrators of making do with less and less. The willingness of the board to make a lot of uncomfortable decisions, including reductions in 24 different line items, such as curriculum materials, instructional supplies, replacement equipment, maintenance, and medical benefits, and also with more than a little hope that these decisions we are forced to make now do not backfire later. The Cheshire Public Schools is consistent, or has been consistently underfunded, and with the average budget increase for the previous three years being 1.6%. This year, it is 2.39%, and I hope that this small increase is the beginning of a trend where it is acknowledged that the Cheshire Public Schools truly need and deserve more funding if they are to continue to be successful for its students, their parents, and indeed the whole town. And with that, I would like to bring forward a motion that the, I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve budget reductions as outlined in the superintendent's memorandum to the Board of May 16th, 2019, totaling $952,110 to reduce the Board of Education's recommended budget for 2019-2020 of $74,308,308,621 to the funding level appropriated by the Cheshire Town Council of $73,356,000, $73 million, sorry, $356,511.
Thank you, Ms. Sobel. Do I have a second? Ms. Harrigan? I'm sure we have some discussion, so. Anyone? Mr. Grippo?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
I know we spent over three hours, I think, last night going over these line items, and there was one item that had been left undecided, so at least I thought I'd take a shot and see what happens. My motion would not be to change the total amount of reduction, but merely a, an allocation in some of the line items, so I'm not exactly sure how that needed to be worded. Do I just ask a change in the line item, or, because the actual motion is sound, it would not change, so I'm not...
Well, we would need to identify the line item changes that we would make for the amendment.
Okay. Then, I guess my amendment to the motion would be to add $15,000 to line 121 custodians and reduce, let's see, where is it? Line 531 communications by $15,000.
By an additional $15,000 over the 22.
Yeah, by an additional $15,000, yes.
So, that would bring it to a reduction of $37,000, $37,110 from the communications.
Yes. And my purpose for doing that would be to fund the building use discount that we had had up there as a potential, that we have, again, discussed for many, many hours, probably by my estimation, 12 to 15 hours this year. So, that's why I chose to do that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grippo. Can you repeat the line item that would be increased by $15,000?
Line item 121 custodians.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Perugini? So, any discussion? Ms. Hellreich?
I think everybody on the board knows my position on this, and I have said it before. I cannot in good conscience vote to subsidized, non-school-related activities with Board of Education money. That's money that we're given by the Town Council to educate our students, and therefore I will not be voting in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hellreich. Anyone else? Ms. Sobel?
I also would not be voting in favor of this. We've spent, we have met with, with many parents in the town. We've had many conversations about it, and given, given the fact that we, I do not think that the Cheshire Public Schools, as they are now, is funded to the level that it should be. It has not been funded to the level that it should be. If we were going to have $15,000 for something, I would put it to textbooks, I would put it to curriculum, I would put it to something that is for the benefit of the entire Cheshire Public Schools. While I certainly understand and sympathize with the parents in town, I think a building use discount would be a great idea if we could sustain it and if we weren't scrabbling to get what we could. I would definitely love to work with the town and see if we can figure out a way of maybe having a town-wide or some sort of collaboration. We don't charge people to use the buildings. We don't charge these, these groups to use the buildings. We don't make any money off of this. Every time there's a custodian who's needed in a building, that custodian needs to get paid, and we have to pay it, and frankly, I don't think that the entire school district should pay for that. We just, we don't have it. Like I said, if we had, if we had $15,000, I would put it to textbooks, field trips, curriculum. There's 24 areas where we just made reductions. I would put it in any of those 24 areas. And so, I won't, I won't be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Ms. Sobel. Anyone else? Ms. Vadi?
So, I have given this a great deal of thought, and I have been a proponent of reducing the fees associated with building usage in order to accommodate the school, I guess, the youth programs in our, in our district, because I feel really that it's very important for our district to provide opportunities for our young students to participate in extracurricular activities, and it really enhances their social and emotional learning when they have the opportunity to be part of a group and do activities outside of school. So, for those reasons, I originally had really been thinking about trying to figure out a way to make this work, but when I was looking at our, really, our obligation in this regard as a Board of Education is to educate, or is to use our funds for educational purposes, and I can't, for the reasons that have been said today, can't take money from a line item that was meant to educate our entire student body to provide a discount to certain groups. And I don't really think that that's what the groups had been intending for us to do, in my opinion. I think that when the issue really came to us, it was about, let's have a uniform system that applies to everybody across the board. So, if someone's coming to use the facilities, every person that uses the facility should be charged the same amount. And what I, and I don't think that it happened in the past. There'd been some discrepancies coming into this year with how we were charging for building usage. Secondly, I think it's really important, and I think it's been said, is that we, the only cost that we are moving towards these groups is our actual costs for custodians, and those are costs that are, we are legally obligated to make, contractually and legally. We can't cut those costs. So, in order to provide a discount to any group would mean that we are now taking money that, that custodial fee, and we are having to find money elsewhere to pay those custodians. And I don't think that that's responsible on our part with our budget. I do think, however, this issue, there are many ways to resolve this issue. I've been thinking about it, and I do really think it comes down to more of a town issue. These are town residents, and they should be able to use all of the buildings for a nominal fee, and I think that as a Board, we are doing our best and will do our best to make sure that the fee that is charged is as nominal as possible, and that the only fee that they're going to be charged is our actual costs. So, I mean, my, I have a proposal, has nothing to do with the budget, but simply I was thinking that if a group at the end of a year doesn't seem to have enough money to pay their entire bill owed to the Board of Education, perhaps there's a system where they could ask or seek a waiver from the town to say, you know, we've tried, but this is our, this is what's owed to us, or this is what we still owe, and is there a way for us to, to get a credit or something like that? And let the town decide whether that's something that they can afford to do. Again, I think that our education budget should be limited to educational purposes, and that's where I am today, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vadi. Ms. Harrigan?
I apologize in advance. I have grave reservations for adding the building use discount to the education budget. I understand the need for community groups to use school facilities, and I fully support allowing school building spaces to be used by groups outside of the purview of education. I'm happy, in fact, that we can support our community without charging for utilities, space rental fees, equipment storage, and personnel hours to manage the scheduling and monitoring the compliance with school regulations. We do all of that for our community, and it seems right to me that school facilities can contribute to the overall well-being of our community in this way, because here in Cheshire, we don't have a civic center or other community use space other than a very small Parks and Recs building that I'm sure we've all used. But what we are proposing here, what Mr. Grippo is proposing here with this building use discount, is effectively earmarking money from the education operating budget to pay for noneducational programming and activities. As beneficial as outside offerings are for our community, if they aren't part of our educational plan and goals, if we have no control over how the activities are conducted and how they contribute to the overall curriculum and educational goals, then we should not be using the education budget to fund these activities. So, what we ask of outside organizations using our facilities, as others have stated, is to pay custodial fees when needed. Not all group activities in our buildings need to pay custodial fees, so that those funds don't come out of our operating budget. What we are not responsible for is how community groups operate, but we are responsible for having a clean and safe school environment for our students when they walk through the doors of our schools. We rely on our custodial and maintenance staff to move furniture, clean up after events, be on hand to take care of spills and other unforeseen accidents that might occur on school property, and to make sure that people aren't wandering off into areas of the schools where they shouldn't be. We rely on our staff to keep our environment secure and orderly, and we pay them accordingly, as Ms. Vadi stated, by contract, as we should. We incur additional costs when they work outside of school-related functions, and I'm arguing that those costs should not come from the education operating budget, no matter how large or small that amount is. This is my fourth budget process as a member of the Finance Committee of the Board of Education, and the fourth time that I've seen our budget requests come back from the Town Council. council with our budget requests slashed to what I consider draconian levels, forcing us back to deliberations and to making decisions as to what can be eliminated with the least amount of negative impact to our students. Invariably, money allocated to building, maintenance, and repairs to our facilities is the first to get cut. Because deferring maintenance doesn't directly impact educational instruction, even if it does cost taxpayers more in the long run to defer maintenance. Let's think about that. Does it directly impact students when we defer maintenance? It was recently brought to my attention that a couple of years ago, the floor of the stage at Dodd Middle School was in such a state of disrepair as to be unsafe for use. I found out that students and parents went out and did some fundraising to get the repairs done, because they understood the importance of that space used for theater activities, choral concerts, band and orchestra performances, junior National Honor Society ceremonies, assemblies, presentations, and performances of all kinds that contribute to the education of our students. As a member of the Board of Education, I'm embarrassed that students and parents had to engage in fundraising activities in order to repair a space in our school, because it was not a high enough priority in our budget and therefore got deferred to the point of unsafe and unusable. I'm also, by the way, in awe of the dedication and commitment to our children's education that parents would go out and raise money to repair our facilities. I've also heard accounts of what happens when we get a good downpour here in Cheshire, and the winds blow in a certain direction, resulting in rain leaking through the roof and into the halls of Cheshire High School. Is this really the experience we want for our young people at school? Let's consider all these other areas that others have spoken about tonight of the 2019-2020 operating budget that we will be cutting funding from in order to meet the operating budget number that the town council was comfortable restraining us to. These include instructional supplies, textbooks and software, library resources, curriculum materials, media supplies, adult education supplies and materials, replacement equipment, communications materials, including website development, travel and conferences for teachers and administrators, and other professional development opportunities, office supplies, and on and on, all in addition to maintenance and repairs of our buildings and equipment. I cannot in good conscience support a budget increase for noneducational organizations who use our facilities while we struggle to meet our basic needs within an operating budget that is woefully underfunded year after year after year. When parents go out and fundraise to get repairs made to our schools, when they are required to pay user fees for their children to participate in co-curricular activities like our sports and music programs, how can we possibly justify adding a building use discount for community users as an expenditure in our operating budget? Yes, I can justify cutting back in other areas in order to add a school psychologist to our staff, to add security support, and to cover special education obligations. These additional costs result in direct impact to our students and their education. We have an obligation to provide the services and programming that contribute to our goals and needs for quality education for our 4,200-plus students in Cheshire Public Schools. We have no such obligation to allocate scarce funds from our operating budget to community groups who use school facilities. I believe adding a building use discount to the education operating budget to be a misuse of funds. I cannot support a budget with that obligation to fund. I urge my colleagues on the board to vote down that added obligation to our budget, and together with the town, we can continue to explore alternative funding sources for community organizations looking for spaces to hold their activities and programs. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Are there any other comments by board members? Mr. Perugini?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'll keep it short. I don't want to beat a dead horse. I do agree with some of our comments that this is education money. I know Adam's heart's in the right place. I think I sense the same frustration he has. You know, we've, we've known about this issue since beginning of school year. Frankly, nothing's been done about it. And we talk about engaging the town, but we haven't done that yet. So in that frustration, I can see why you allocated this money for a school year, maybe by some time to do something versus doing nothing. But at the end of the day, I think we're just going to probably get a problem that we shouldn't have. So I'm starting to work with you, Adam. I think, you know, we need to engage the town and figure out something that we can do this. But I appreciate your, you bringing this back up again. I know you're fighting for these folks, and I think they know you're fighting for them too. So, thank you, but I will not be supporting this line reduction for increase, as I say.
Thank you, Mr. Perugini. I'd just like to address something that Tony just said, which is, we have spent many, many, many hours, Mr. Maciana has spent hours and hours analyzing our building usage and what is done in other towns. We've talked about this. We've tried to find a way to accommodate these groups. And, you know, to say that we have done nothing is just completely inaccurate. We have not been able to provide financial relief this year to these groups. We have been operating under a budget freeze for the, almost the entire year. But, so I don't want the public to think that we have just ignored this issue, we haven't done anything about it. We have spent quite a bit of time, I think my fellow board members would agree, in trying to find a way to resolve this issue. So I just would object to that characterization. Thank you. So, if there's no other...
Well, ma'am chair, I just clarified my comment. You're right. You guys, we did something. We talked about it. My reference to doing nothing is, I think we operate on our own on this and not engaging the town council or the departments of the town to see if we're together to get something done. That's the next step. We need to do that. So that I want to see done.
Thank you for clarifying. All right. Any other comments from the board? Is there any member of the public who would like to address the board on the motion to amend the budget? Seeing none, the motion before us is to amend the budget presented to, God, I don't even know how to say this, to amend the budget presented from the Finance Committee by adding $15,000 to the line item 121 custodians by $15,000 and reducing line item 531 communications by $15,000 to offset that. That's correct, right? All those in favor? One. All those opposed? The motion does not pay, six opposed, one in favor. So we're back to the original motion. Yes, do we have a discussion on that?
Yes. So ma'am chair, I think it'd be worthwhile, because not everyone has our documentation through this process or what you guys talked about last night in finance. Can you, can we go through the line items that are impacted from this change?
Sure.
Read them out.
Sure. Ms. Sobel, would you care to walk us through that?
We are, as I said, there were 24 accounts. Account number 113, do you want the amount for each one, too?
I think it'd be put in context.
Okay. The account name is Teachers. It's a reduction of $40,000. I'll do those after. For line item 201, Medical Benefits, it's a reduction of $500,000. Line item 204, Pension Retirement, a reduction of $66,795. Line item 205, Workers' Compensation, $14,685. Line item 560, Tuition Outplacement, line item, it's a reduction of $50,000. And I just want to add a personal note on tuition outplacement. This year, we are looking at a $250,000 shortfall that we were not expecting, and it is in this very line item. There were, there were things that were done, we start our process in January, so in the spring, you can look at everything, and it was decided that there was room in that budget or in that line item to reduce it further. But it's an extremely volatile line item, and when I say that I'm really hoping that these reductions don't come back to, to hurt us in the end, this line item is one of them. 611 is Instructional Supply, a reduction of $60,000. Account number 641, Textbooks and Software, again, $60,000. Line item 642, Library Periodicals, $20,000. Line item 643, Curriculum Materials, it's a reduction of $5,000. 644, Library Media Supplies, a reduction of $10,000. 645, Testing Supplies, a reduction of $5,000. 730, Replacement Equipment, a reduction of $20,000. Line 531, Communication, reduction of $22,110,000. Line 580, Travel and Conference, a reduction of $1,450. 590, Other Services, a $1,300 reduction. 610, Office Supply, reduction of $13,160. 627, Transportation Supply, a reduction of $15,000. 690, Other Supply, a reduction of $750. 810, Dues and Fees, a reduction of $10,000. 410, Public Utilities, a reduction of $5,000. 420, Maintenance Repair Equipment, $10,000. 430, Maintenance Repair Buildings, $80,036. And I will say, that is another item, line item, that scares me, because our buildings are not in great shape. What is good about that, we have a really horrible thing happen, there's insurance. We have a capital nonrecurring fund that we can tap into. But we have been taking out of our maintenance items for years. Last one is 613, Maintenance Supply, a reduction of $5,000. We do have four accounts where we added to them. One is 119, Managers Supervisors, $50,000. Property Insurance, 520, Property Insurance, $7,112. Line 521, Liability Insurance, $6,064. Oh, that's it. Those three items.
Thank you, Marlene. So, I couldn't make a discussion last night, but I divvied up the summary. I think it's a great job you guys did, and it was a long discussion, but well worth it. So I, the teachers, I was expecting a reduction of $160,000. Is that because we've added headcount somewhere?
There was a reduction of $160,000. We were relying on retirements. We, we have a number of retirements in hand, but some of them are replaced by other people, so there's no money there. It's just, the new teacher will take that, gets paid basically the same. The half, the part-time special ed, which is a legal obligation that we have, that's $40,000. And then the, the third psychologist, that position is $80,000.
Oh, so we did add a third psychologist.
We did add a third psychologist. The overall consensus among all of the board members, and I know from the public as well, as well as our staff, is that we, we needed it. This way, we can have a dedicated, we can have a dedicated psychologist for, for every building.
No, I was glad to see that. I'm happy you guys did that. That's, I appreciate it. And the manager supervisor increase was for what?
That was the school security position.
Okay. We talked about that. Thank you.
Superintendent Solon, do you...
Yeah, I would, I would just want to clarify with respect to the retirements. You know, generally, when we have a retirement, generally speaking, when the individual retires, they're closer to the top step of our payroll. When we hire a person to fill that position, they're toward the bottom of the payroll, generally speaking, and there's a net savings each time we, we have that. The reason that we don't necessarily have as much of that this year is because with some of the retirements, we've reduced positions at the middle school, we're reducing three positions. Two of those retirements will be filled by people who otherwise would have lost their job. That's the contractual, you know, relationship that we have. Another example would be, we have a retirement at Cheshire High School. So the person who is retiring is a biology person, a biology teacher. Last year, in last year's budget, we had to make a reduction at the middle school, the person with a significant amount of experience is a biology teacher. In spite of her experience, she had the less, least seniority, and she, her position was cut. Contractually, if there's a position that opens within 18 months, that individual is invited back. So, you know, somebody who's higher on the pay scale will be invited back. So there's really not significant net savings in those situations. So I just wanted to clarify that in terms of how those positions are filled and what level of savings you might recoup in those situations.
Thank you, Mr. Solon. Anyone else have any comments at this? Ms. Hellreich?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'd like to thank all the members of the Finance Committee, because I know you spent a lot of time on this last night, and here's Nervous Nelly again. I just want to caution us, I mean, I will be, I will be voting for this budget, but I still want to make the caution that we're cutting 95, almost $100,000 out of maintenance, repair and equipment, repair, building supplies. We're cutting $120,000 from instructional supply and textbooks, and we're cutting $500,000 out of the medical benefits account. And I, I worry about the future. I worry about what happens next year or the year after. If we have, most of us that have been on the board have been here when there's been one or two really high claims in our medical benefits, and it, it can wipe it out really quickly. So I, I worry about a couple of years down the road when we may have to put, come, come back to the town council with a half a million, a million dollars in medical benefits. We don't know what the state's doing with the, the teacher pension, but supposedly that's still coming down the pike. And, you know, this year, the town council has graciously said that they would pay for it, but I believe in the future, that's probably going to get passed on to the Board of Ed again, and, and we'll be looking at a half a million dollars there. So, while I, I, you know, we have to do something for next year, but I just caution us that we've got to be really careful. We have, if no one knows, we have old buildings in town, and just continually cutting from maintenance could end us down a rabbit hole where we don't want to be. But with that said, thank you to the Finance Committee, Mr. Maciana, Mr. Solon, Mr. Willonis. I'm not sure if you had a whole lot to do with the budget or not, but, and I, I will be supporting this, although with reservation.
Thank you, Ms. Hellreich. Any other comments?
I also want to, thank you, Ms. Maciana, Superintendent Solon, your staffs, building administrators. I know they started and put with the budget, beginning, beginning of the process. I think this past winter, we had a pretty good discussion by Finance Committee about the budget, talked a lot of these topics, those very, very, more informative than it has been in the last few years. For, for me, this is my 10th budget on the Board of Ed. I was actually on this board when our medical trust fund fell well below $1 million. But we worked with the town council over the course of a year or two, helped Ms. Maciana and worked through that. So I, and also, the fact of the matter is, the medical trust fund's not going to decrease by $4 million in 12 months. It's just not going to happen. So I'm not worried about, I, I'm in the industry. I see it. You know, so, sorry. It, it will decrease. We're absorbing more of the cost, I get that. I'd be more worried if the trust fund fell below $2 million or close to three months claims. We're not there, we don't want to be there, but just so folks know, boards in the past have worked with the town and planning for the trust fund. It is not something I want to spring on anybody to run it down to the point where we can't get it back up in a reasonable manner without putting additional pressure on our taxpayers. So I, I don't think that's a concern for us. In the end, the increase we're getting, and just so folks understand, our, our budget that we have in place right now for the current fiscal year is not decreasing. Our request that was made is decreasing. In the end, we're still getting 1.712 million dollar increase, which I think is pretty substantial, given the 1.6% we see in the past years. So I know we'll, we'll do the best we can with that. I know administration will work hard. I don't think it's a draconian cut. I don't feel chained by it, by the town council. And with regard to town council, I think folks should know that they've made a lot of inquiries to the superintendent. Many of the members asked for a lot of detailed information, I think more so than we see in the past. That tells me that they are looking at the budget, they are seeing what we're seeing. I know they talked about in the grave length in their public hearings, forums, the pressures facing Cheshire. So I think, in all fairness, they made a fair reduction. I know many of them didn't want to do it, but I do have... Uh, I know many of them didn't want to do it, uh, but I do have faith that in the coming years, as things improve, we'll be able to make increases when the time is right. So, thank you, town council, town manager, everyone involved. Uh, I do support this budget, and we'll do the best we can with it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perugini. Mr. Grippo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to also thank, uh, Mr. Messiana and Mr. Solon for their detailed budget breakdowns, um, in our three-hour marathon, um, Finance Committee meeting last night, uh, where we heavily debated, uh, almost every line item, I believe, uh, and the validity of each cut or addition. And, um, and I, and I wanted to thank them for, uh, for, for almost awaiting all, all of the changes to, 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 uh, it's sometimes give us reassurance that, you know, maybe it's okay to, to reduce certain line items, that there's a certain headroom built in there that, uh, that we can use to not only, uh, meet the town council's, um, uh, required reduction, but also for us to find the, uh, the additional funding for those important positions, such as the special education teacher, that third school psychologist that we all agreed upon, and even more importantly, and cer- slightly less, to find the, uh, the district's security support, um, that, uh, we believe that we think we need, and hopefully, uh, will, uh, successfully support our school going forward. So, um, I think that, uh, the Finance Committee was a success. I think we had a great discussion last night, uh, and I will be supporting the, I guess, the original amendment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grippo. I would just like to say a couple of things. One is that, um, I think that our average budget increase over the last years was one point one six, not one point six. Just to throw that out there. Also, you know, when we look at these cuts, I, I understand what you're saying, Adam. I don't, I don't view it as that we have any headroom whatsoever. I think that we, when we're, when we're looking at where we're going to make cuts, we make sure that we are not, um, affecting the student-teacher ratio at all. I mean, that is the ultimate goal, is to make sure that that is not, um, affected adversely. So, you know, but i- if you ask me, if we're cutting sixty thousand dollars from textbooks and software, that's, you know, that's not nothing. You know, that, that has an impact in ways that, you know, may not be as direct as the, um, student-teacher ratio, but these are all items that we absolutely should be spending money on. And so, you know, I don't want, you know, the public to think that we build in, you know, extra into our budget. These are all legitimate, uh, required expenses, and as I think a couple of people have said, you know, we have been underfunding our district for quite a while, and we are running out of places that we can make these kind of cuts without then starting to affect the class sizes, which is, you know, or extracurricular activities, or, you know, a lot of other things that are much more, you know, what we would call high-impact areas. So, uh, I think that we did a really good job of, you know, trying to balance where we were going to cut. I'm a little worried about the medical benefits, you know, reduction, but we'll just have to deal with that. And as Mr. Perugini said, you know, we'll do what we got to do to make sure that our students have, you know, exceptional educational experience. But this is, this is painful, this nine, one hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar reduction, even though we're still getting an increase, this is still a painful, you know, kind of cut. So, um, having said this, I, you know, I think that the Finance Committee deserves a lot of credit, Mr. Messiana and Mr. Solon, um, and because they approached it in as creative a way as we could, and we were able to add, you know, a security person, and the third s- school psychologist, and the special ed, uh, person that we needed. So, overall, I mean, I think we have to be very proud of ourselves for getting to this. So, I will be supporting this budget as well. And now, I will ask if anyone from the public has any comments to this? Or, okay, seeing none? Then, the motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education approved budget reductions as outlined in the superintendent's memorandum to the Board of May sixteen, two thousand and nineteen, totaling nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, to reduce the Board of Education's recommended budget for two thousand and nineteen, twenty, of seventy-four million, three hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-one, to the funding level appropriated by the Cheshire Town Council of seventy-three million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Ms. Sobel, I think you have one other item for the Finance Committee?
I have one other item. Mr. Wilonis, um, would you review the attached, uh, grant activity? The grant activity?
Yes.
The grants report.
Great, the grants report.
Thank you.
Okay, our grant activity for, uh, uh, two thousand and eighteen, nineteen was a grant total of one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. That included Title one, two, three, and four grants. Carl Perkins Grant, uh, a couple of special education grants, IDEA, Open Choice Grant, uh, Adult Education, Pec Jones, and Smart Star. Would you like me to go over the amounts of the grants?
I don't, I, I did turn it on. I don't know that we need each of the, uh, each one of them individually. The total amount, if I, if I'm reading this properly for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, is one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five?
Fifty-five dollars, correct.
In grant money, which is slightly less than it was, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. But we do apply for every grant we see.
Every grant, I believe that we can, yes. And I, I, Cheshire is a little more limited than some of these, uh, larger towns and cities, but...
Right. No, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sobel. Mr. Perugini, do you have a report from personnel?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's already Thursday, uh, Monday. The Personnel Committee held a meeting, uh, as the Board of Ed at the Hall. Unfortunately, it was an executive session, but I could tell you it was related to the Assistant Superintendent's search, where we completed our interviews and gave some, gave some feedback to superintendent. With that being said, and there was, uh, no motion or action following that meeting. But that being said, uh, the second item is really for Superintendent Solon to discuss. I'll let me get you more detail on that process and what came out of it.
Well, uh, thank you, first of all, Mr. Perugini, and the members of the board for your participation in that process and the feedback you provided. Uh, that was a, a critical part of a lengthy process where we posted the position for Assistant Superintendent back in February. On, uh, February fourteenth, our Personnel Committee met and went through the, the process and timeline, and we posted the position, and we were, uh, able to draw almost a hundred applicants for the position of Assistant Superintendent. So, it was super competitive. We brought in nineteen people to engage in screening interviews with a, a small group, and, uh, we had another interview with six of those folks. Uh, the interview committee consisted of, uh, it was a pretty large committee. I think, uh, it was a universal reaction when you, the candidate would come into the room like, "Well, okay," uh, with a couple of board members. I appreciate, um, Adam and Catherine giving up a full day to interview those candidates along with a number of teachers, uh, parents, uh, through the district. And, um, Ms. Grillo, one of our elementary principals at Norton, spent the day interviewing, um, these candidates before they were asked, the, the four more candidates, four candidates were, uh, invited to come back and give a presentation, and then interview again, and then finally interview with the board on Monday. So, to, to call it a thorough process might be, uh, quite short. And so, with that, we were able to identify, uh, a candidate who we feel is a tremendous fit, uh, for our school system, and I can say that with incredible confidence, because she's already a member of our school system. Um, Ms. Marlene Solano began her career in Cheshire several years ago as an assistant principal at Highland Elementary School. Actually, you could argue that it went back much further because she was an intern in our school system when she initially began her educational career, before becoming a, an assistant principal at Highland. And then ultimately, uh, the, the next step, I guess I should say, was her serving as principal at Chapman Elementary School, where she found great success with her students and staff and community, uh, including being recognized twice, uh, in consecutive years by the state of Connecticut for our academic success. She built off of that experience and has served, uh, this year as our K through eight curriculum coordinator. In that position, she's done an, an incredible job, particularly given the fact that, uh, we were working with an interim assistant superintendent for half the year, and it was really a team effort on the part of both people to carry the curricular load, uh, since January. Uh, in her work during that time, she's worked tirelessly to coordinate our efforts, really K to eight and beyond, uh, around mathematics. And, uh, in addition, she's done an incredible job integrating our, uh, elementary world language program as well as intervention supports throughout the district. So, it is my honor and privilege to recommend to the Board of Education, uh, Ms. Marlene Solano, for the position of Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services.
Thank you, Mr. Solon. Uh, Mr. Perugini, do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Cheshire Board of Education appoint Marlene Solano to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services effective July first, two thousand and nineteen. Further, that the board set her salary for the period of July first, two thousand and nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, at one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. The board authorizes superintendent to finalize a contract for a three-year period commencing on July first, two thousand and nineteen, through Ju- June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. The final term, terms of the agreement will be approved by the Chair of Cheshire Board of Education, who is authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Perugini, is there a second? Uh, Ms. Hellreich. Is there any discussion? Ms. Sobel.
I have, uh, known Ms. Solano since she was an assistant principal at Highland Elementary School when, when my kids were there. I have, I, and all of my interactions with her, both as a parent, as a, both, including as a parent, as a board member, as a member of the community, she has always, uh, just been incredibly impressive. Her breadth of knowledge is, is great. She's very, she's very detailed and considerate. And in dealing with her, and it has always been a pleasure, and I am very pleased that, um, I am very pleased to support your, your, uh, your, your appointment as Assistant Superintendent. And I think you will be, continue to be an incredible benefit to all of Cheshire Public Schools and the town of Cheshire.
Thank you, Ms. Solon, S- Sobel, sorry. Ms. Harrigan.
I have gotten to know, um, Ms. Solano over the past three and a half years, and I am very pleased, uh, with this choice. I find Marlene's, uh, tempered, realistic approach to problem-solving very effective, and I appreciate, uh, working with her on curriculum matters, and I look forward to continuing that work with a true professional in every sense of the word. So, um, I will be supporting this appointment.
Thank you, Ms.
And I'd also just really like to thank Catherine and Adam for hours and hours of interviewing before it got to the, the rest of us when we got to just partake of the, of the finalists, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hellreich.
Um, I also am very pleased, um, to have Ms. Solano, um, move up to the Assistant Superintendent's position. I've had a lot of, as, as the, as the ex-board chair, um, I had a lot of dealings with Ms. Solano. I find her to be very thoughtful, considerate, deliberate. And seeing her work with students and teachers, i- it's, it's a wonderful thing to see because they all, um, I think have a great respect for her. And I think most, I think we, on the board level do too, and I think it's going to be a great fit, so, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hellreich, Ms. Vani.
I'm going to read my comments. So, Ms. Solano, um, I want to start by first thanking you for your service to our district. In all my encounters with you, you have been thoughtful, well-spoken, and professional. You are well-respected by parents and colleagues. You are an asset to our schools, and I thank you for all you have done and continue to do. It is because of my respect for you that what I'm about to say is even more difficult. Do nothing, do nothing to do with you personally or professionally, but instead, due to objective criteria I was seeking in an Assistant Superintendent, I am unable to vote in favor of this appointment. As a board member, every decision I make is based on what I believe is in the best interest of the school district and our community. Based on my personal experiences on this Board of Education and my interactions with members of the community over the years, I personally believe that it was in the best interest of this district to hire an external candidate as Assistant Superintendent. Someone with experience in this position, and someone who could step in and lead our district if the need were to ever arise. I believe it is important to continually seek ways to improve by embracing different ideas and perspectives. A diversity of perspective can come from experiences from varying geographical areas and from work in different school systems. Based upon my personal experience on this board, I believe it is beneficial and important to have someone new view a situation with objectivity, perhaps questioning and trying to improve upon practices embedded in the system. For me, I was looking for someone that could add to the current experiences and knowledge of our district. Someone to work in conjunction with you in your role as curriculum coordinator. Your work in that role, which I truly appreciate. I was especially pleased to hear your approach with the improvements in the math program, and I truly appreciate your desire to assist in improving communication. I wish you the best of luck, and I thank you in advance for the work you will do for the betterment and improvement of our school district. And I want to add that I, no matter who the internal cand- if there, I would have voted this way irrespective for any internal candidates, I want to make sure you're, you are aware of that. And this is nothing personal, and I wish I could be the type of person to say, "I'm going to vote a symbolic yes just because." But I feel like I have an obligation to vote my conscience, and I think that's what we expect of our students. I, you know, a vision of the graduate is independent thought, um, and creativity, and I try to bring that in every decision I make. And, um, like I said, this is, has nothing to do with you as an individual or person, but as a decision, I would have made irrespective for any internal candidate. And I do wish you the best, and I am going to support you from here on in. Um, I just can't vote in favor of this nomination for that particular reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vani. Mr. Grippo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Solon for, uh, inviting me to the fifteen, I believe it was fifteen-person panel, uh, where we spent a full day interviewing six candidates, where we then voted on a top four, uh, where then, I believe, a panel of administration, I'm not sure exactly who participated, but, uh, narrowed it down to two, right? Where then, we, uh, met with those two people on Monday. It's been a very busy week. So, I had the perspective of, of knowing all of the other candidates as well. And so, my, my vote tonight is, is difficult. And I, I still haven't decided how I'm going to vote. But what I will say to, uh, uh, Ms. Solano is, is good luck in your new position, because obviously, the votes are already here, and you will be hired. And I'm, uh, confident that you will be, uh, an, an excellent Assistant Superintendent. And I guess, as my father always says, um, give somebody a chance, uh, and, and hope that you're wrong, I guess. So, uh, with that, I'll just end on a sort of a negative note, but, uh, good luck in your new position.
Mr. Perugini.
Marlene, I'm speaking directly to you.
Marlene, I'm speaking directly to you. So I, I've, I don't know you very well. I know of you, and it's great things. And since I got on the board in 2009, I would tell you, your colleagues, students, parents, I would say anyone you've gotten in contact with would always say you're fair and you listen, and I think you're one of the best listeners we have in the school district, and I think that's huge for this role. I don't support this nomination, and it has really nothing to do with you personally, and it pains me to say that because sometimes doing the right thing is not always easy, but you know, the fact that it bothers me, I know it's the right thing to do. I echo a little bit what Nita said. I, I, in my profession, I walk into a lot of places from outside looking in, and I get to see things that perhaps sometimes the folks that have been there a long time don't get to see. I, I like Nita and in some ways Adam, I would have preferred to have seen a candidate that had previous experience, that has tackled some of the issues that we're just starting to deal with, and I think we have some issues that we have to deal with that some outside perspective would help. I think that would complement, especially what you bring to the table. That being said, while I support nomination, you have my full support. I know you're going to knock this out of the park, and I have no problems looking in a year or two, and you telling me I told you so, but you know, that kind of person, you're going to do it because you know what's right for the students. But I want to be clear that I feel for a number of positions in our district, we can use some outside experience. So I thought you should know that. You still have my respect, and I hope we still be friends after this. But thank you, Marlene. I know, Marlene, I know this is a very difficult process, but you made it to the end, and congratulations, job well done. If I could be so bold, frankly, I think the work you're doing right now in your role is awesome. I think in the, in the year that you've been in it, I've seen some noticeable change, particularly from the demeanor of our parents, especially on the math program, which is a huge, huge positive step, like to keep you seeing doing that. And if I were selfish, I guess if I had a wish, if I were superintendent, you know, I would love to see you take over the principal role at Doolittle. But I know you have bigger aspirations and you have a bigger impact on the school district, so congratulations. You do have the majority support here, and as always, look forward to working with you on this. Thank you.
Well, I, I find it hard to understand decisions to not vote for someone who is clearly the best candidate for the job, and especially if those who are not voting are convinced that you're going to do a great job, which I already know. And I sat through, as Adam did, all the interviews. It was a great group of people. It wasn't like there weren't a lot of choices there. The four that were brought back, we all thought were, you know, great choices to bring back, and the two finalists were very impressive, you being one of them, and the other one I thought was also extremely impressive. And I, I, you know, what I, I don't, I'm not understanding, if we all think you're going to do a great job, then there you go. That's not, that, so there's the answer to me. And I am not a fan of, you know, I'm not afraid of change, but I'm not a fan of making a drastic change if the person that we already have in the district who's doing a phenomenal job and is a, already a leader, why wouldn't you just, you know, cultivate that and, and celebrate that?
We're clear to our reasons why.
Well, but that makes no sense.
It's not that you don't want to understand that, that's fine. But we think of our reasons. So.
Okay.
Sorry you don't agree with it, but that is my opinion. I was very clear as to why.
I heard you, and it's my turn to speak. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Perugini, can I please finish speaking?
Of course, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Well, in any event, I am pleased that you are going to be stepping into this position. I think that, you know, Mr. Solan deserves to have someone that he thinks is the perfect fit. I respect his decision. I respect the process, and you know, you have a lot of support on the board. Apparently you have a unanimous support, even if we can't all vote in favor of this appointment. Having said that, I will obviously be in favor, I will be voting in favor of this. I will ask if there's any comment, public comment, anyone from the public like to come up and speak? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Rob Baccato, 1146 Wolf Hill Road.
Mr. Baccato, so I just want to make sure you're clear that you're, you're going to be speaking to this particular thing, okay? And you have a three-minute limit, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So as having a daughter in Chapman School, I've got to, to know Ms. Solano. She's worked with me through issues with curriculum that I do not agree with. She's spent a lot of time with me, getting me to believe in it or to look at her way or the school's way with this curriculum. I know the students loved her, all the parents loved her. I think she's going to do a great job, and I like that she got selected for this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public want to comment?
Chairwoman May, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Wilonis, please.
Thank you. I've had the pleasure of working with Mrs. Solano over the past several months. I've, in my forty years in Cheshire and in other school districts, since my retirement, I've worked with a lot of people, a lot of administrators, and she is one of the best that I've worked with. My job could not have been made easier by anyone. This school district is, by voting her in as Assistant Superintendent, is making an absolutely wonderful decision. I just thought, want you all to know that. I don't think you could have found a better candidate if you went on a national search, really. And, and I say that from a lot of experience, so I just wanted you to know that. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilonis. Okay, I'm going to repeat the motion for a vote. The motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education appoint Marlene Solano to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services effective July 1, 2019. Further, that the board set her salary for the period July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022, at $159,000. The board authorizes the superintendent to finalize a contract for the three-year period commencing on July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. The final terms of the agreement will be approved by the Chair of the Cheshire Board of Education, who is authorized to sign the contract on behalf of the board. All those in favor? Four? All those opposed? Four in favor, three opposed, the motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations, Marlene. Thank you, Marlene. I will report on the meeting, the planning committee meeting that we had on May 9, 2019. We were joined at our meeting by one of our town council members, Mr. Slocum, who came and, you know, primarily, I think, for the purpose of, you know, engaging in some conversations about the facilities master plan and, you know, what our next step was, were, but since we were also looking at our capital budget for the next five years, he was quite helpful in sort of, you know, thinking through some of those things. So I appreciate you taking the time to, to join us. Mr. Masiana, would you be able to just give us a quick overview of the energy resources proposal that we moved along? And I do mean quick.
The, the proposal that was made and agreed by the planning committee to move forward, I do want to add that it was then presented to the town council who approved it to go forward to the final step. Basically, what this is, is a contract that we'll be entering into with a company by the name of JK Resources. They'll be doing three energy conservation measures at the high school, insulating the steam pipes and the utility tunnels, upgrading all the LED lighting inside the building and all the pole lighting outside of Cheshire High School, and also making refrigeration improvements. The nice thing about this project is the cost structure. The total cost of the improvements is $266,000. We'll be getting an incentive directly from Eversource of $103,000, so the cost of the project is $162,000. We'll realize $28,500 in savings per year, so the project will pay for itself in 5.71 years. In terms of financing, there's a couple of additional really good components to this. Of the $162,000 project cost after the incentive, part of the Eversource program that sponsors this program is a four-year, $100,000 loan, zero interest rate. So we get to borrow that money, but there's no interest. So the funding that we need to get $266,000 worth of project work done is $62,493, which the council approved, $52,356 coming from an existing capital appropriation for the steam piping insulation, $10,000 coming, $10,137 coming out of our operating budget. From a cash flow perspective, in the first year of the project, when we're paying $25,000 per year of that loan back, with the energy savings, we're still netting $3,449 per year in our pocket. And then after four years, when the $100,000 loan is fully paid, we'll benefit from $28,449 in energy savings going forward. So we get the infrastructure work improved, and then we benefit from energy savings for years going forward. So the next step is really just to dot the i's and cross the t's on the contract, and then prepare to do the work, which we do intend to do this summer. So very, very pleased and, and thankful for all those committees across the town that weighed in on this and, and allowed it to go forward. That includes the Energy Commission, who did see this and approved it unanimously, Public Building Commission, you know, the Planning Committee of the Board, and the Town Council also approved this to go forward unanimously. So thank you for all those that helped us push this along.
Thank you. We also, as I mentioned, Mr. Masiana presented to us the proposed capital budget plan for 2019-20 to 2023-24, and we went through the budget requests by category and by school. We had, you know, a couple of new proposals that were included on the five-year plan. There's a number of proposals that have been on our capital plan but keep getting moved forward as being not something we want to do right this moment, but things that we will have to tackle at some point. The items on this plan for 2019-20 include updating Norton Kitchen and Cafeteria's serving area, window replacements at Cheshire High School, you know, some funds to repave parking lots and driveways at various schools, boiler replacements at Highland and Doolittle, unit ventilator replacements, air conditioning replacements, improvements at Chapman High School and Dodd, lavatory upgrades with Doolittle being on the list to go first, because we have done that on a worst-first, first-worst basis. Replacement of millwork ceiling tiles and flooring. There's a request to upgrade the stadium lighting at the Cheshire High School main game field and to replace aged electrical switchgear on the west side of the high school. And, oh, right, there's a request for some money to improve the lot where the buses are stored. So the total request for the 2019-20 capital budget is $3,545,000, and I think you each have a breakdown of, you know, exactly what it is. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Masiana?
No, thank you. You covered it very well. The items, I will say, are just necessary maintenance and repairs, you know, to our buildings, to our ground, and to our grounds, and to make, you know, improvements from an energy point of view, which includes the stadium lighting at Cheshire High School.
Thank you. Are there any questions about anything? No, okay. So I have a motion to present, which is that I move that the planning committee recommends to the, wait a minute, that the, I got the wrong one here. Cheshire Board of Ed approves a five-year capital expenditure plan for fiscal years 2019, 2020 through 2023, 2024. Further, the board directs the superintendent to transmit the plan to the town manager on or before June 1, 2019. Do I have a second? Ms. Harrigan. Any, any discussion, questions, any? Nope? Seeing none, then the, oh, yeah, oh, Adam, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I will support this motion, but only hesitantly, because I know that we are working towards putting together a comprehensive plan for all of our school buildings, and until that time, it looks like at least some of these items on here should take priority. So until we have that comprehensive plan, I hesitantly vote for this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll get to that part right after this. So anybody else have any? Mr. Perugini?
Yeah, it's a good point, Adam. So folks are saying this is our five-year capital plan, does not include monies for facility master plan. But that being said, planning committee has had several discussions on this, and the items that are certain years, one, two, three, and four, and five, to an extent, are things that we would have to do anyway, regardless of whether or not, things like a high school would build out ten years out from the start of a plan. So none of these are really gone for waste, but I do know the planning committee spent some amount of time this past school year going through these in context of what can be done with a master plan. I do understand that's going to come up next, so thanks for bringing that up. I was about to make that point. But I will support this budget as is. So thank you, Ms. Masiana, for helping us put this together.
Thank you. Any other comments from, okay. Does anyone from the public have any comments to the motion before us? Seeing none, the motion is that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the five-year capital expenditure plan for fiscal years 2019, 2020 through 2023, 2024. Further, the board directs the superintendent to transmit said plan to the town manager on or before June 1, 2019. All those in favor? Unanimous of those who are still here. As Mr. Perugini mentioned, you know, we also spent time during the planning committee talking about how we're going to move forward with our, you know, facilities plans, talking about, we were talking, we talked about whether there's any capacity in any of our elementary schools to try to figure out ways that we could possibly redistrict. You know, at this point, our schools are fully utilized. I mean, there are no, you know, spaces that are not being used for, you know, supporting our students, basically, whether it's, you know, general education classes or areas that are needed for special education purposes. So there aren't a lot of options in terms of consolidating unless we also, you know, build onto a building, renovate. I mean, so at this point, you know, our, our hope is that we can start working with the town council, either as, you know, both groups together or committee or something that we can start a conversation based on what we, you know, what the town thinks that we can bear in terms of cost and what our educational needs are. One of the things that, one of our next steps is that Mr. Solan and Mr. Masiana will engage with the town manager and with the town manager and his staff to explore, like, you know, fiscal implications, like what can we afford and how would it look based on other needs that the town has. So, that should be happening hopefully soon, and we will be meeting very regularly, the planning committee will, just to keep this conversation going, and welcome any member of the town council to attend those meetings. And again, hopefully, we will connect, you know, figure out a way to have a joint meeting of some sort to really engage in some conversations that will move us forward. Mr. Grippo, did you?
I just wanted to add to your comment. I just wanted to thank Mr. Slocum, who's in the room tonight, for attending our last planning meeting. I thought his attendance helped bring some clarity to our discussions and to help sort of, help us look to see where we need to move going forward. So, his assistance was very welcome, and I hope that that sort of participation continues between both the board and the town council so we can work together collaboratively. Thanks.
Ms. Harrigan?
I will reiterate what Adam just said. Thank you, Tim, for participating in that meeting. It was extremely helpful to have you there.
Am I missing it? Is that it? That's it for the planning committee meeting, right? Okay. So, that wraps up that Ms. Vadi policy.
Thank you. The policies we reviewed for our first reading were, oh, my glasses, 0000, mission statement, core beliefs and vision, and 0025, strategic goals and performance standards. Lumping these together, because these are the two that came out of the Personalized Learning Task Force. The mission statement has the vision of the graduate, and the strategic goals and performance standards just updates the performance standards developed by the Personalized Learning Task Force. I'm not going to read any of those. Everything, all these policies are online for everyone's review. 5144.1, students use of physical force, and the next policy, 5144.2, students use of exclusionary timeout. Both of these involve changes. One is to statute about exclusionary timeouts and, just the use of exclusionary timeouts. And then the other one is a K recommended policy, and that is also about exclusionary timeouts as part of behavior management approach. 5145.124, students passive alcohol screening. So, this is a policy that Mr. Solan recommended that we had adopted. He explained that our district does not currently have a written board policy on passive alcohol screenings. This policy provides a structure for the use of passive alcohol sensors in this district to detect and confirm alcohol consumption by students. We spoke about two policies for a second reading, and that was our, sorry. Personnel certified, non-certified nepotism, employment of relatives. This is policy 4112.8. We continued our review and discussion of this revised policy and hope to bring it forward for a third reading next time. We also discussed for a second reading, 4115.3, personnel certified evaluations. This is a new policy that we drafted that substantially tracks state statute, and it calls for the athletic director to perform evaluations of coaches, athletic coaches every year, and to also include surveys to be completed by students participating in that sport, and those surveys would be anonymous. So, we did work on this draft new policy, which also is on the website, and hopefully we'll be bringing that forward for a third reading next time as well. I am going to bring forward three, several policies for a third reading and approval of the board tonight. They are 2400, administration, evaluation of administrators and administration. This policy is being updated per Cabe's recommendation, and our most recent policy was a little vague, so, and outdated, so we did revise that. The next policy I'm bringing forward for a third reading and approval is 3160, business emergency line item transfers. This policy is being updated per the recommendation of Cabe. The only change to this policy is to add language stating that the town council will be provided an explanation should an emergency line item transfer be made. 3240, tuition fees. The only change being made to this policy is to update the legal references. 3313, business relations with vendors. This policy is being revised to update nondiscrimination language. 5141.7, student sports concussions. This new policy is recommended for adoption as it is required by state statute. So, I move that the Board of Education approve the following, the policies, sorry, 2400, administration, evaluation of administrators and administration, 3160, business emergency line item transfers, 3240, tuition fees, 3313, business relations with vendors, 5141.7, student sports concussions.
Thank you, Ms. Vadi. Do we have a second? Ms. Sobel, any other, any comments or discussion? Seeing none. The motion before us is that the Cheshire Board of Education give a third and final reading to policies number 2400, evaluation of administrators and administration, number 3160, emergency line item transfers, number 3240, tuition fees, number 3313, relations with vendors, and number 5141.7, sports concussions, and direct the superintendent to put said policies into immediate effect. All those in favor? It is unanimous of those who are here. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vadi. Are there any other standing committees that have a report? I think not. Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the Board of Education this Please state your name and address and limit your comment to three minutes.
I'm very familiar. Sherwood Dawson, 500 South Main Street, Cheshire, Connecticut. I have four children that went through the Cheshire school system. There's four generations of Dawson, as of today, living in the town of Cheshire. And if you give me a little leadway, because in June, I will be 80 years old, so a little respect would be, would be nice. And I've sat on different boards and commissions in the town of Cheshire for many years. I was honored for 25 years by the state of Connecticut, and just a little familiarity of who I am as a person, not speaking for the town. My children went through the school system, are very happy. They're very successful, and I was very proud to see the young lady tonight. She reminded me of my family. They're very ambitious. I have family in the school system, but I'll let that go at that. Their honor is not mine. I went to the last meeting, which brings me here. I have enough with the planning and zoning, being a commissioner, but I heard rumors, I'm not a rumor believer. I like to hear and see for my own eyes. I get phone calls constantly, people looking for help. It's been that way for many years, but if you go back to the farm days, we helped everybody. In fact, I've been in this room, council chambers sat under the weather also, and we saw that there was people here, and it was asked by myself many times and other commission members, could we let them go first out of respect to people that put us in office, voted for us, and are taxpayers of the community? So, I would just suggest the chairman has more power than people think if she reads Robert Rules of Laws and a little bit of the state of Connecticut rules. You'll find that, you could have overheard the board, and you could have explained that there's many people in the crowd that aren't familiar faces, and you feel that you limited us to three minutes and probably running out quick. That's why I asked for a little leniency. But what brings me here now, you know a little history, whether it's important to you or not, to me it is, because my children did excellent in the school system, and my grandchildren are doing excellent, and my great-grandchildren are doing. I'm very proud. I love the town of Cheshire. It's the best place for anybody to live. Everywhere you go, you're from Cheshire, great school system. So, you folks are there now. When my kids went to school, I guess it was a lot more lenient and not so much politics. So, now I'll get to my point. As I repeat myself, I went to the last meeting, I saw two mothers crying, I saw them explaining how their child was getting stabbed in the back with pencils, and they were taking elastic bands and shooting them at them. Most, I look here, I see you people were there. So, I said to myself, wow, this is hard to believe, maybe an emotional mom. Then I saw another lady come up, and she went through the same things. So, I had people call me, say they saw me, you know, at the meeting, because I guess it was televised, like all meetings, I think, most of them anyway, and they called me and asked me. I said, I really don't know a lot about it, and they're telling me a lot of things, and you try to tell them, why don't you go talk to, you know, the superintendent of schools, principal, Board of Ed, whoever? And they're all afraid. So, I saw two people, but I got calls from a lot of people, and they want help, but they don't want to get involved. They're feared, they have more than one child in the school system, they want to get along, and they don't want to have any problem, but they need help. So, I understand, a little bit of hearsay, a little bit of research, that your hands are somewhat tied. To that extent, I don't know, but that's what I understand. So, I say, for the town of Cheshire's reputation, the school system's reputation, the love of all of us people that love the town of Cheshire, please, if you can't handle it, we have resources in this world that are unbelievable, but we got the greatest chief of police in Cheshire. So, if your hands are tied, I realize there's tons of rules, and you can't do anything, please, call and get the chief of police. They're very educated. We're lucky that we have such great resources, and I don't have anything against you folks. I know a lot of you, I think you're very professional, but I did take exception to the board member that was under the weather. I've been in this council chambers at 1:30 at night, and I was under the weather, but I got voted in by the people that were sitting out there and the people watching TV. I thank you for your time, and I only beg you, we got a lot of intelligence here. Put it to work and feel sorry for the people that voted you folks in, not you guys, but think about what I'm saying, for what it's worth, you know? My father always said a mouthful is a waste of time, but a couple of good points are more important. So, thank you, Madam Chairman, for your time, and please, I'm not asking for me, for the people in the town of Cheshire that don't want to come up to this mic, please try to help them some way, and if you can't, you have to get the police involved. They have power, more power than you and I would have. So, please stop this. Don't ruin the town of Cheshire's reputation, the school system, and what's going through the town. I'm standing up here, I don't like being up here, I don't like talking about this stuff. You're the professionals, not me, but I can tell you, when I get calls and it's bigger than I thought it was, you really got to think about it. Thank you for all your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Thank you for the extra time.
You're welcome.
Rob Ricciotto, 1146 Wolfville Road. I'm third-generation Ricciotto in Cheshire. There's four generations of us here, like the Dawsons, and I was appalled tonight. This isn't the only time that someone on this board has disrespected the public, whether it be me, other people. I'm planning and zoning. I've seen it where our chairman has moved up communications with the public up first, let them get home, they don't have to be here, it's your job to stay here late. I've called into meetings with 103 fever. I don't go home because I have the sniffles. I think that's ridiculous. But I think this shows what I see in the board of lack of transparency, hiding behind rules, not publicizing things that need, that the public should see. I was at a curriculum meeting, and I was told new books that were out there that go to hummus and into the library, that, eh, the public can look on the meetings to see when this is happening. The public's not going on looking at a meetings on the website. It should be your job to post those in the Cheshire Herald, like we post all legal notices. I don't know why this isn't televised and live. P&amp;Z meetings, council meetings, everything's live. Here, the meeting we had in March, I asked to get a copy of it. I was told no. I'd have to either wait till you guys post it on the website, or I have to go through and fill out paperwork to see it. I don't understand that. It just looks like you guys are hiding behind things. The meeting back in March, it was, it was a good meeting, you heard a lot of parents come out, there was a ton of parents. In the paper, it came out that, eh, a few people that were, it sounded like were bitching and moaning. There's been no plan put out by you guys. Come up with a plan, not just, I'm going to form a committee, let's talk about it, talk about it, talk about it. You heard that early in the meeting, that you guys just want to talk about stuff and not put together a plan, not notify people. When I went to the high school and through all the school here, I don't, yeah, there was bullying, but it never got out of control like this. It was taken care of in the schools, whether you got suspended in school, out of school suspension. I don't know what the problem is, and I don't like that people are hiding behind rules, whether it's state rules, federal rules. There's a way to get around it. You don't have to publicize the people's names or the students' names, but I feel that this Board of Ed, you don't care about the public, you don't care about the parents. I know in curriculum and other stuff, you guys are helping out the children, that's fine, but there's an issue on this board, and it was proven tonight when you wouldn't let us speak because you had the sniffles, or you wanted to get your agenda done. Put it aside. The public's who put you here, but you don't treat us like that. I don't understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ricciotto.
Jeff Natale, 512 Cardinal Lane. And just first, a point of clarification. Do the board members get to speak openly at these meetings later on in the agenda, whether it's about past meetings or anything that's going on? Is there an opportunity for them to have an open discussion?
I'm not sure I know what, yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know what you're talking about.
I'm sorry, after we finish speaking here, I finish speaking, anybody else comes up? If you, if you as a board member wants to bring something up, do you have that open opportunity for open discussion?
Yeah.
So, that will happen tonight if a board member wants to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, I just want to touch on a couple of things. I'm not going to go long, I'm not going to repeat what was already said. I also sit in that seat, where Ms. Harrigan sits, serving in the town, and I want to say what Mr. Ricciotto said. If somebody in the public has to sit through two hours of our public hearings, we let them go first. It's just common courtesy, and, you know, I wouldn't say I'm appalled, but I'm disappointed that the public wouldn't come first. Also, the meeting that happened in March, it was very emotional. I know that it wasn't easy to sit there and listen to what's going on in the town, and you hear all the stories, but what I'm looking for is some action. The last meeting, the Board of Ed, I went, I know the superintendent spoke for a few minutes, and in the Cheshire Herald today, I read what a great meeting it was, how everything came out. Well, we got the invitation for the meeting late on a Friday night. I didn't look at my email until Monday morning, like a lot of other people, and people didn't know the meeting was happening. The meeting tonight, I would have hoped to see more people here. I put a posting on Facebook today saying, hey, you know, Board of Ed meeting tonight, here's your opportunity to speak. People don't know that you have your meetings. It was mentioned about, you know, other commissions, the planning zoning or the town council that is posted in the Cheshire Herald. We need a better way to communicate with the public, to let them know when your meetings are going to happen and when they have an opportunity to come out and speak. I think that you'd hear from a lot more people, and you'd probably get a different perspective on what's going on. Also, at the meeting last week, I don't remember who brought it up, it might have been Mr. Grippo, and I'm sorry if it wasn't Adam, but the suggestion was to have a follow-up forum, advertise it, oh, Mr. Pearjeany, thank you, advertise it, and get, let people come in, again, give them the opportunity to follow up with the meeting for March, see what is being done. See what is being done and let them, give them the opportunity to speak again. Um, I'm hoping that this board follows, um, what Mr. Perugini is suggesting. And if he can make a motion for that, I would highly suggest it, to have that special meeting. Advertise it in the paper, advertise it online, call people up. We have the code red in town, I know we call up about trash pickup. I think we could probably call up about a board of ed meeting, uh, that's that important for the town. Um, also, I, I waited after the meeting. Um, I, I spoke to the superintendent, I spoke to a few more people, spoke to a few parents. There's a lot more stories out there that you haven't heard. And that's another reason why I'm a proponent for you to have another meeting, to give people opportunity to come in and speak. Uh, so I know it's not easy sitting up there, but I think that as a board, you need to do a better job of listening to the public, letting them speak, hearing their opinions, and correcting what's wrong. Uh, at the meeting on the eighth, just one more point if you could. Uh, at the meeting on the eighth, also I heard a lot of, we're gonna have coalitions, we're gonna have meetings, we're gonna have getting people together, we're gonna talk, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. I never heard that, and we're gonna take action. It's all about talking, it's all about getting people together to, I, I do, I don't know what. But I think the public in Cheshire is looking for some action. Doesn't have to be huge right now, but I think that you need to show them that you're taking their concerns seriously and you're gonna make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Natale. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Rob Oris, 71 Autumn Court. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, uh, and I was not one of the public that asked for the public comment portion of the agenda be moved to the beginning. But as I sat and listened, um, I jotted some things down. And I think it's important that I at least have an opportunity to say a few things at this point. And, um, I'll try to be as brief as I can, I'm pretty certain I'll be within the three minutes. Uh, but I did jot them down, so I want to read it because, um, as many of you know, uh, my family has been going through a very long and emotional situation in the school system with one of my children. Uh, it dates back to November 2017. And it has been an extremely emotional situation for our family. It's taken its toll on my child. Um, and I really wasn't prepared to come and say anything about it tonight. I was really hoping and waiting that we might have another opportunity. Uh, I did go to the meeting last week and, uh, which I read, again, like somebody else here, uh, late Friday, I guess it came out, I didn't see it until like Monday either because I didn't check my emails. Uh, I don't know if that was purposeful or not, but, you know, to me it felt like it was. Uh, and I saw it Monday and I, I did eventually get there. And, and I was just a little late and I had missed whatever dialogue, uh, was regarding a follow-up to that March meeting. And I was really kind of surprised by that. Um, so, you know, that was concerning to me. But if, if you'll indulge me for a minute, I would like to at least, uh, try to get through this because, um, as you can probably tell, I usually don't have an issue. As chair of the council, um, I speak a lot and, uh, I usually don't have any problem doing so. But because this issue has been so emotional and, um, effective in my family, I'm sitting here shaking as I actually have to read some of these comments. And, and my comments will not do our journey any justice. Um, but in any event, I'm gonna try to read this as quickly as I can. I want to start by saying that I do believe there are many, many high-quality people in our school system. They're very dedicated and they do a lot for our kids and I thank them for that. However, I do believe there are spots of issues impacting many that need addressing. I spoke at the March meeting with many other people dealing with very emotional issues within Cheshire schools. And to this date, I'm not aware of any meaningful action by the schools regarding many of those issues. My family's situation certainly has not been addressed to our satisfaction and most especially our child. Um, nor do I believe the board of ed has given those concerns the attention they deserve. You posted and held a meeting last week to follow up on the March meeting and what we got was, what I'm told, was about a minute's worth of update from Superintendent Solon. I find that unconscionable. Um, my child's issue, as I said, goes back to November 2017. And my family has been very diligently trying to address those concerns within the proper channels and to this date, in our opinion, have not been addressed satisfactorily. Instead, we've had many interactions that seem to focus on everything or everybody. But who is most important? My child, our child. I've written acknowledgement from you folks, from certain members sitting across from me right now, that you didn't do enough in his situation. Regarding my son's situation, one bu- board member stated during this journey, it's just Rob and we have other important issues to address. Really? It's just Rob? It's not just Rob, it's my son. It took my wife and I almost nine weeks to get a response to questions asked of staff. And when we did receive one of the responses after almost nine weeks, it was curt, disrespectful and lacking any meaningful detail at all. Is this acceptable? Where's the accountability, folks? That's all we're asking for. Nobody is saying to you that we have massive problems in this school system. What we're saying is there are some real issues that need to be addressed. And you need to address them for the people to put you in those seats. Couple of months ago, board of ed member Hellreiche asked me to provide her copies of written correspondence relative to our schools, our child's issue. And I wish she was here tonight because I feel bad I'm speaking about her and she's not here. But I can't control that. She asked for me to put written correspondence together so she could read them in entirety. I spent hours putting all of the correspondence together. I put a cover letter together. I put it all in a sealed envelope and I hand-delivered it to her house. I expected her to review it. I expected it would lead to some dialogue. I wasn't expecting her to say, Rob, everything's, you, everything you gave me, you're right and we're wrong. But I did expect a response. I did respect at least a reach out to say, Rob, I read it and I think you're all wrong. That would have been enough for me. I might not have agreed with it, but I think we deserved a response. I got nothing. Still waiting for it. My child deserved more and so do many other kids in the system. As a result of this experience and lack of any meaningful solution, my child, my son, my last child, has decided not to return to Cheshire High School next year. To my family, this is very, very, very disappointing. We moved to this town because we love this community and we love the school system. I put two other kids through the school system. What those kids experienced is not what my last child is experiencing. That needs to change. All of the kids deserve more. I'm not here just advocating for my son, but I do have a personal journey that gives me deep experience as to what my child went through. And if it's happening to me and based on what I saw in that March meeting, it's happening to a lot more other people. And many of you sitting in those seats will say, it's really nothing, it was just a few people. Well, that night you packed the room. There were people that didn't come because they couldn't find parking spaces. And the next day, it's read, well, there's just a few people that had concerns, but most people were here to talk about, hear about curriculum. Shame on you for that. So it's time that this board of ed start holding the system accountable to do what's in the best interest of the kids and stop protecting the system at their expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oris. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak?
Matt Bowman, excuse me, 422 Maple Avenue, Cheshire, Connecticut. I've lived in this town for almost 67 years. This is without a doubt the most... I don't want to say disrespectful, but it's the most inept board of education and administration I have ever in my life had the unfortunate situation to interact with. And it's very difficult for me to get up here because I went through this school system. My father went through this school system, my kids went through this school system and my grandkids are in this school system. I had a very lengthy discussion with Ms. Hallen in February. I couldn't make the March meeting, I was away. I wish I had, I would have spoken. I had a discussion with Mr. Solon in January, asked him to get back to me, had a few issues. I still haven't heard. That seems to be what happens in this school system. You ask questions and you get no answers. You board of ed people are running a $73 million corporation. If the administration, your CEO, CFO and the rest of the administration are not doing their job, it's up to the people that we elected, the board of directors, for that $73 million corporation to step up and hold them accountable. You haven't. Some of you did tonight, but most of you haven't. Thank God for November because you people need to be replaced. As far as I'm concerned, most of you should resign. And I'm talking about administrators and board of ed members. You've hidden way too much behind the baloney of privacy and the rest of it. I asked questions that were not answered and you want to know something, Catherine, you can tell the rest of the people what you and I discussed. And thank God I was on speaker with a witness because you can't deny any of it. You can't deny the way you spoke to me, you can't deny the words that you said to me.
Mr. Bowman, this is not the forum for you to attack every single member of the board of ed. Okay, if you have a comment?
Yeah, I made a comment, I'm making a comment. I did.
Thank you, thank you. You've made yourself clear and I, I'm gonna have to ask you to stop speaking.
You are?
Yes.
You're interrupting me now?
Yes.
So you are?
I am.
Good, resign, you're useless.
Would anyone else from the public like to address the board of education at this point? Seeing none. Okay, old business I would like to bring up. Let's see, where is that? I have it right here. Following the March 18th forum, um, one of the things that we talked about was, you know, figuring out if we, there should be a board committee that would look at, uh, safe school climate. Um, we, we had some discussions, the, the superintendent proposed a, uh, safe school climate committee that, uh, would be comprised of a number of different people. We had some internal discussions about how would that interact with the safe school committees that already exist. Um, for those who do not know, every school has a safe school climate committee and there is a district-wide safe school climate committee. Um, so we, uh, we had some concerns about how would we, uh, we didn't want to overlap too much. We want to make sure that everything was, um, being looked at efficiently. So Mr. Solon came up with a slightly different idea, which would be to change the composition of the district-wide safe school climate committee. And to include, right now, can you explain what, who's on it right now? It's administrators and?
Yeah, it's predominantly administrative right now as we, um, review policy and design, like our safe school climate surveys. A lot of that's driven by the state, but we evaluate those and, and make recommendations from a district perspective. But the proposal was to be more inclusive and also address school policy, curriculum and finance.
Right, so the proposal was to, um, add a member of the board of education curriculum committee, a member of the board of education policy committee, a parent from each school, superintendent and assistant superintendent, and then also the teachers and administrators at, uh, representative of each level. The responsibilities would be to identify and address patterns of bullying among students in the district, excluding any personally identifiable student or, and/or parent information, which as I know people think they are just silly rules, but it is federal and state law that we are, um, required to comply with. Uh, this committee also implements the provisions of the school security and safety plan regarding the collection, evaluation and reporting of information relating to instances of disturbing or threatening behavior that may not meet the definition of bullying, to review and suggest amendments to policies related to bullying, to review and make recommendations to the district's safe school climate coordinator, who happens to be, that, that is a position held by the assistant superintendent, regarding the district's safe school climate plan based upon issues and experiences across the district, to educate the Cheshire community and parents about issues related to bullying. Beyond these, um, you know, standard responsibilities, the committee will review disciplinary protocols and related laws and policy, review de-identified disciplinary data and historical trends, review building safe school climate committee reports, review ongoing social, emotional learning programming, review of mental health data and historical trends. I guess review the safe school climate survey structu- oh, review the safe school climate survey structure to make sure, because we had some comments from, um, people who took the survey that maybe the way it was structured didn't, um, give us, you know, exactly the kind of information we wanted. And make budgetary recommendations to the superintendent of schools to address any additional resources necessary to re- support recommendations. So I think it is time for the board, I mean, we've all had this for quite a while and, um, maybe we could just talk about this, see if, you know, I would like to see us implement this revised safe school climate committee district-wide. So do you, do you have something to?
Yeah, I was actually, that was one of the old bits I was gonna bring up. So the board members back in February brought the idea of a committee. This was before the March 18th meeting. And I'm glad, I know Superintendent Solon took the initiative, went off, pulled this together for us. We got an email with this, but as far as I could tell, we never discussed this publicly. And I'm glad we are, at the last meeting last week, I asked, I had you put on the agenda item. Um, so we could discuss it publicly. I like the idea. I think that particular committee, that's not a board committee, is needed just to bring consistency and cohesion out in the community so that folks understand where exactly the administrator's hands are tied and where they're not tied, what's going on and so forth. But I, that's not the idea I had. The idea I had was to put the board, either be a subcommittee of policy or a new board committee, we had the power to do that in our bylaws, that focuses on safety, school safety, climate, um, and bullying issues. And the reason why for that is, I think one of the problems I have why we're caught off guard by the March 18th meeting, and I will echo, I'm still hearing from parents. I actually heard from parents after the meeting last, last week. We have no skin in the game to ensure these policies are actually working. And I think we have a blind spot. Now, I know Adam, and I think you were gonna bring this up earlier. You had asked, I think, or Nita, a number of us asked a couple of months ago for Superintendent Solon to put in the superintendent's report and packet, some of the basic stats of what's going on. Because you can't, as a board or anybody, I do this at work, I mean, I send the board directors, you know, how you know a company's doing, you're looking at data, you're looking at numbers, the trend's increasing, decreasing. We don't have that data. And I think we are tracking it now because of the initiatives that were put in place with the safety school committee, but we need to see that rolled up to the board of ed. That data does not include personally identifiable information. It doesn't include information that goes to the state on cases that, around bullying and so forth. We're not tracking trends. So as, as a board, we're deferring outside of our purview to a committee that has no skin in the game. It's up to us to enforce these policies through the superintendent. I can't do that without seeing the data. So I think it's, well, this committee makes sense. I think it's a pretty big committee to have, a lot of people to coordinate. I think it has to happen, but I think this board or the next board needs to have a dedicated committee with a subcommittee on policy, maybe politicians talk about it, so that we can actually track this, we're accountable to say that these policies are working and we can point to statistics and take action from that. That's what I was talking about back in February. That could be a discussion for another time, but...
Okay.
Can't be hands-off not seeing the data. The board has to see that.
No, I'm not saying that the board shouldn't see the data.
So the, yeah, the, the board has to see the data, has to see trends, what I just talked about. Instances of bullying, what schools are reporting what, not who, what, where, when, why.
Right.
We keep going back to that nonsense, we're not, that's not what I'm asking for. Facts, we got a budget, we got numbers, we went through a 24-line item reduction. Facts, I know how it's working, I know how the budget's being taken care of. Say the school committee, these incidents we're seeing out there, I still don't know what the root cause is. And there is root cause. The fact that we're blindsided by it, it tells me somewhere at the board level, we're missing a key piece of information that we're not tracking. missing a key piece of information that we're not tracking, that's tying back these policies we're trying to enforce. So, my mindset is around getting a committee around that. I'm more than happy at a discussion, probably in policy where it belongs, but I think that's got to happen regardless of this. That's my opinion. We don't have skin in the game. And we're not taking any action on it.
Mr. Grippo.
Madam Chair. Firstly, the statement that you just read, was that meant to be policy because it reads like policy? Was that, was that meant as a motion, as...
No, no, no. No, I was just, I wanted to put on to the record just sort of what the proposal was from the superintendent, and then open it up for a discussion to see if this is what makes sense. To me, you know, I understand wanting to get data, and we could get da, we can get data, and the superintendent could provide us with a monthly report. I don't know what, you know, the committee, we should make sure whatever we're doing is in fact cohesive and doesn't become inefficient. So, you know, maybe what you're proposing, Tony, is it like a discreet, you know, piece of it, so that it wouldn't be sort of re, re...
No. So, so, in committee, right? In committee, the board can make decisions specifically about, I'm sorry, go ahead, Marley.
Yeah. No, I was just saying, what he's talking about is completely separate from what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a separate part and parcel from that.
No, that's...
I'm talking about a board member subcommittee.
Okay.
Specifically focusing on these issues, where we can talk and set policy, give policy direction to the, not set policy, but give some direction, but hold ourselves accountable for these things. That committee is a great idea, in my opinion, for the general public, for folks to understand, but at the end of the day, that's not holding us accountable to anything. And I think part of the problem, again, I just have a general lack of insight into what's driving these issues. I think it's important enough that the board consider forming a committee to focus just on that, much like for policy, budget, and planning. I think we get it started, and perhaps it starts once this gets rolling, I'm not sure. That'll be one of the inputs, but again, I'm not willing to adjudicate my responsibilities to a committee outside of the board.
Right, but I thought, I think I believed that the, this committee would then report to the board, but I hear what you're saying, that it's just, it may not be this...
Well, much like personalized learning task force, they will give inputs to the board.
Yeah.
It's not a board committee, not to report us at all.
Right.
I'm sure they would give us updates. What I'm talking about is the board taking accountability for social safety climate.
I just want to say, I don't think, thank you, I don't think that committee would be adjudicating any of our responsibilities as a board member because we have a committee that involves members of the public. I, I think actually it would go the other way, and we would, we would have even more accountability because it wouldn't just be a policy thing. I'm not saying I don't like your idea, I do. I'm just saying, right now, she's asking specifically about that, and I think that's a really good idea, and I don't see any reason why we can't explore creating two of them. It's not an either-or in my, in my opinion. It can be, it can be a both, because there's certainly information that we would share with board members that we would not be able to share with the public. So, it would sort of serve two different purposes. They can, they can work together. I think that's a really good start, because I know that people in the public wanted to have more insight into it. And this is a good way of bringing the public in and sharing it on a much larger level. I also like your idea, because I would like to see the trends, I would like to see if there's a pattern that we can discern. So, I don't know why we're talking in opposites. They're just separate things.
Fair enough.
Opposites attract.
So, I, Emma, I like the ideas of committees to a point, but I feel like our response to a lot of issues that come up is, let's form a committee. We had an issue, summit came up, well, now let's, let's have a personalized task force, learning task work, let, let them deal with it. All right, communication is an issue in this district, well, let's have a communications task force or communications committee. Now we have an issue with bullying, well, let's form a bullying committee. I don't think that that's our job. We can't keep forming committees to have the committees deal with these issues. I think it's our job as a Board of Education, and I said this, that we had the meeting on a Monday night, we, the public forum meeting, the Thursday, three days later, we had a Board of Ed meeting, and it was not discussed, the forum was not discussed until Old Business, until a few of us brought it up. There was, there was no response until, what I mentioned at that time is what I had heard from my meeting, I had thought about it for three days, and I said I heard, the issues are trans, to me, transparency, accountability, and responsiveness. And I came to that meeting with ideas because I had thought about it. Like, what can we do to try to address these issues? It's not just forming a committee, and fine, we can do that, we can have a committee, but as a Board of Education, we have a responsibility to act, and we can't just say, have the committee deal with it, that's not enough. So, at that meeting, I came up with some, some, I had suggestions, and I don't know to this date whether those have happened. And maybe those weren't great suggestions, but at least I would have appreciated feedback as well as to, does this, is this going to work, is this not going to work? As far as for responsiveness, I said perhaps we need to have a date by which, when an administrator or a teacher or someone receives a complaint, perhaps we need to have in place a time limit by when that person has to provide a response to the parent or address, address the issue. I said that a month and a half ago. I don't know where that went. I say things, or people say things, and they just, I don't know what happens. So, that was one thing. For accountability, I said, can we please have regular superintendent reports that the Board of Education gets, and that also then you can share publicly deleting any confidential information? And can we also have a way by which then the principals report to the superintendent so the superintendent is getting all the information? And at that time, I had suggested maybe a monthly report. But since then, you know, I've been talking to someone in another district and found out that they do something that works even better, I think, which is, they have a weekly report. So, the superintendent provides a weekly report to a board every Friday, and it's not dense, it's not a long email, it's, these were the events that happened this week. This is what's important. This happened, and, and these are the things that are on the horizon for next week. So, we are continually updated, and we are continually getting information. And that email on Monday goes to the entire public, student body, saying, this is what's happening. So, you know what, this week, we have meetings, we have a Board of Ed meeting, we have, these are all the great things coming up, we have high school, whatever it is, you know, the important events that everyone in the community should know about. So, instead of, I mean, I don't think we've received a monthly superintendent's report as far as I can tell. I'm sorry if we had, that I just missed it along the way, but I'm still looking for that, and I, but I would like to now increase that to do something weekly. And also, you know, the principals do the same type of reporting in their schools. So, it's every week, the principals will set out, these are the import, this is the important information you need to know that has happened, and I'm not saying it should be time-consuming, it's bullet points, it's quick, easy reads, that we can all, you know, just be informed. A lot of this is being informed. So, I thought that at least will help with accountability, because if you are reporting to us, we have the information then that we can act upon. And if the principals are reporting to you, you have the information, and hopefully there is a chain of just information sharing where we can be more knowledgeable and know what is happening in this town. So, that was, and then for transparency, I was saying, I think my idea had been, at least for these committees, we have a school, Safe School Climate Committee, we have committees in these schools, they are working, people are working hard, but the public doesn't know about it. And I said, can we just have the schools put on their websites, when their meetings are, agenda item, a schedule of events, who can be contacted if there's a particular problem in a school, how they can reach a Safe School Climate Committee, how they can reach a Security Committee, because that transparency and openness will at least help alleviate some of the issues. So, I, so I say all that, saying that, yes, we can do a committee, and that's fine, and I, I wonder too whether we need to, when we're, when we're forming a committee, I really want to know specifics, like, and I think you've outlined that pretty well. I would think this committee, the public committee should meet more than twice a year. And I think that any board member who wants to be on it should be able to be on it, it shouldn't be limited to two. And I do like Tony's idea of another Board of Ed Committee, but I don't know if I would just limit it to bullying and safe school, maybe we need, or do we, pardon me, I'm just thinking out loud, because our job is to create the policies, and it's the administration's job to enforce them. It's not our, I don't think, is it our job that, I know we are then supposed to make sure they're being enforced, and I think that's where the disconnect is, so maybe it's just a committee that, an enforcement committee, I mean, I don't know, something, because I don't think it should just be limited to one area. If we want to be accountable, or we want to say, we want to make sure that the policies that we are putting into effect are being enforced, maybe it has to be across the board. So, maybe I'm just thinking that. Sorry to ramble.
No, no, I think it's, you've been very clear on this, and we've talked about this idea a number of times. So, again, my, I'll say it again, the committee is not the end-all, be-all to anything. There's more of a, there's, there's several ways to approach this, you know, depending what the board wants to do. The fact that we're actually having this discussion is huge, because we haven't had a discussion in any detail on these topics in a while, right? So, we need more of that. My idea of a board committee, maybe it's just the board, it could be done in a policy. The point is, I don't have visibility into what's going on, what you just mentioned. That could be enough for the board to act on as a whole, or via policy. My mind goes back to policy, at the end of the day, these inputs, recommendations shape policy. But we do need to verify those policies. And again, I, I went to the committee ideas more of a longer-term thing for the board. This committee idea, I think if Superintendent Solan wants to do it, you know, again, like you did with personalized task force, obviously it's not a board committee, they meet as much as they like, I think that has to happen in tandem with whatever the board decides to do. So, I thank you for clarifying that, I'm with you, I didn't lose the notes of that night of your ideas. I was going to save the March eighteenth meeting for another old business topic, which we could do next, if you don't mind, I'm sure you want to talk more about this, but... So, Madam Chair, where do you want to go with this?
Well...
Unless there's other comments, I'm sorry to take away from the members.
Okay. Ms. Harrigan? Working off of what Ms. Vadi was talking about, I see a lot of this connected to our communications strategy moving forward, and, and part of what that communications strategy is supposed to do is work on our website, correct? So that this information is shared in the way that you're talking about. And yes, more needs to be done with information sharing, I totally agree with that. But something that strikes me as interesting is that I didn't realize that we actually have a, that we have issues with policy not being addressed, or, I mean, that's, that's not really the issue, is it? That we need to police?
That's the whole point of a Board of Education, is enforce our policies through the superintendent and verify they're working. The fact that we had those people show up that night, I'm sorry, I want to clarify what you asked the question, shows us that we're not admiring those policies specific to school climate. We have no data. You can't tell me what happened last month across the screws, number of bullying incidents increased or decreased, where, is there a trend or a pattern? How do you know those policies are helping? That's what I'm saying. So, until I can validate those policies, I can't tell you that they're working. Now, this is not all policies, it's specifically germane to this discussion. That's what I'm talking about. You have no data yet. And I think what Nita's talking about, Superintendent Solan wanted to put together, will help us get that, we just kind of need to see it. Until we see that, I can't tell people in the audience that I think we're doing a really good job, but I can't tell you for certain that things are getting better or worse, based on how we feel. I want to know, but based on data, we have to get there. So, that's what, that's what I was talking about, not that all policies are not working, I just can't verify it in this case.
I don't think that's really a policy issue. I think what you're asking for is data in, from the individual schools themselves.
No, it's a policy issue, that's the point I made.
I disagree, but I haven't thought about it from that perspective.
Well, it's a policy enforcement issue. When we're, I guess the point is, when was the last time the board actually looked at school bullying statistics, applied to our policy? Yeah, it's getting better or worse, we don't have it. That's my point. Now, how can you make, how can you, and how you validate your policies actually working?
I don't even know which policy you are specifically referring to.
School safety climate, anti-bullying, all the school safety bullying climates that we have.
It says how you set one up.
How do you verify that it's working?
It doesn't, it doesn't say anything if I'm, and I don't recall it off the top of my head, but I don't think it has criteria for how you actually implement it, it's, it's this is how you set it up. Regulations define how the policy is enacted.
Right, but we're not verifying if they're working.
Regulations, regulations are the responsibility of the administrator.
The Board of Ed, so...
So, the question that you're asking, the question that you're asking can be answered with information that the superintendent hope can share.
This, this is the point.
But that's not policy, that's regulations.
This is the whole point. We're not asking the questions, whether it's in policy, curriculum, planning, it relates to these topics that we heard March eighteenth, we're not asking. My point as a Board of Ed, I can't sit here and tell you that these school safety policies are working a hundred percent because I have no data to back it up, right? As a policy committee, when you're making policies, when you review policies, yeah, you're reviewing policies based on the state, but I think you also want to shape them based on what's going on in your district. That's the point.
Yeah, and that's what, you know, that we would be doing that through this proposal, reviewing that data. And I, I think it is important to look at that data. I sent the board all of our behavioral data, data on April twelfth, you know, and we need to look at what's this month's trend, and, you know, what is that telling us, if anything? Certainly, we, we have done many things since March eighteenth, we, we talked about that last week at our, at our forum, whether it be, you know, reviewing training with all of our administrators about bullying, notifying all of our parents about how to report any mean-spirited behavior, the SEL review that we did, social-emotional learning, and we put that on our website. We educated parents about what is the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act, which limits what we can share with parents about behavioral situations and other students when they're involved as part of their educational record. We also worked with our administrative team around communication with parents. We've, you know, made the proposal on March twenty-first about a way to address this. So, you know, what, I don't hear people saying tonight, we shouldn't be moving forward with this, this committee. And if that's the case, we will move forward with that immediately, you know?
That's your call.
Yeah. And so, you know, the feedback then, and, and we will move forward with this piece as to whether or not, you know, a, a board committee is formulated, obviously that's, that's your guys' decision.
No discussion in my time.
Yeah.
Madam Chair. It's been sixty days since March eighteenth, approximately. We have still yet to receive any hard data in which to judge if any of the things that the parents who filled this room poured their heart out to tell us on camera, on that microphone in public. We still have taken very little action. We, we've talked for sixty days now on how to solve this problem, and all I've heard is that parents continue to lose hope, that a lot of the parents who spoke here and who spoke to Mr. Perigini before the meeting have yet to receive satisfaction. And regardless, you know, that time has passed now, and we need to establish some sort of climate of trust with our parents again. And I'm not exactly sure how to go ahead and do that without the help of, of you again, Mr. Superintendent Jeff. I, I don't, you know, there, there are these problems that they spoke about, and it sounded like a lot of them had to deal with FERPA, because a lot of them were not receiving a follow-up to their, to their problems. And, you know, I actually, I was texting with Ms. Vadi, well, I think it was last weekend, where I read through FERPA, and I wanted to understand what a disciplinary record was and how it was treated by FERPA, and I found out that it was considered an educational record, and that if a record is to be disseminated to a third party, which I guess would have been the offending parent, right, or the parent of the child who was wronged, we'll say, there needs to be a written disclosure from the other parent, saying it's okay for that parent to read the record. Now, in, in my opinion, and I'm not a lawyer, some of you are, informing a parent of what happened... informing a parent of what happened in a vague way is not a violation of FERPA. There would not require a written, uh, notice. But that's just my opinion, where I, I think that no FERPA is not an answer, because parents still want to know what happened. And if there's any kind of a, a vague answer that can be given besides no FERPA, I think that this administration should look into that. There has to be something that can be done, because I, it sounded to me, even a lot of the parents who are here were like, I've just never heard back. I don't know what happened. Things continue to happen, and there's nothing I can do about it. At least, that's what it feels like to me. And it doesn't seem like, um, those issues have been solved. And in order for us to do anything about it, we need to have that information to be able to look at the trends, to see what every school is doing, so that we can hold everyone accountable. And I, I don't know how to go about doing that. I see, you know, I, I actually, I, I read through your, your presentation from last week, uh, especially the, the section on discipline, protocol, and review. There's, you know, I like to, you know, to review copies and completed reports to a following bullying investigation, to implement the provisions of school security and safety plan regarding the collection, evaluation, reporting, uh, relating to instances of disturbing and threatening behavior that may not meet the definition of bullying. And I think that last part, may not meet the definition of bullying, is also something that needs to be clarified with parents, because they may not understand the nuances of, I believe it's levels one, two, and three of escalation of, of violent incidents or, uh, or incidents that are legally considered bullying. That sort of clarification needs to be crystal clear. And, and have those lines of communication open, uh, so that trust can be restored for that, let's say, one percent, three percent of people who, uh, who, who find great problems, uh, within our school system. Because, you know, we saw in, in the presentations, I would say maybe ninety-five percent, maybe that's high. I don't know. Ninety-five percent of, of the students here, uh, have a very agreeable experience here in the school system. But it's that, that, that small percentage of parents who, uh, who have yet to receive any kind of reconciliation, that, that needs to be solved. There, there needs to be something in place to, to help them feel better, to help them trust the system again. So...
If I may?
Yes, you may.
After the March eighteenth meeting, I personally contacted a good number of the people who spoke, personally, to try and resolve their issue. Last week at the forum, if you recall, I specifically said that we've trained our administrators around communication. You can't tell somebody, um, and for some people, this is not, they, they just, they're not satisfied even with a vague response. And I can't tell somebody even, well, I can tell you vaguely what happened to, to Johnny. What we've talked to our administrative team about in terms of the training is, no, you can't disclose the educational record. It's a violation of FERPA. We'd be sued, um, and it would be very expensive for our district and community. However, when we have conversations with parents, as I said last week, we've talked to our administrative team about when a student, when certain behaviors occur, these are typical, uh, consequences that may occur. I can't tell you, I can't unfortunately share specifically. And I will tell you, the vast majority of parents, I, I've been an administrator in Cheshire for fourteen years. You know, this is my first engagement with parents in our community. The vast majority of them, when we have conversations like that with them, understand and appreciate that communication. There is, as you said, a, a minute percentage that that is not, that doesn't satiate their need for knowledge, or, um, feel like it's perhaps punitive in nature enough, um, for them. You know, and I, it's, um, nearly impossible to resolve that, that concern. But we have worked, you know, you, you read some of what, read aloud some of what we've done. So, to hear that there's no action is, um, befuddles me, because we've communicated, um, to an incredible degree with our, our parents since March eighteenth. Uh, as I said, either personally, often through mass email, presenting the, um, the forum again last week. I've shared the behavioral data with you, uh, members of the board, and we will continue to track that trend, both through, you know, sharing it with you and, and our district-wide committee. Again, it, it can't be personally identifiable. I don't hear you asking for that. But I just want to repeat for the, the benefit of the public that we cannot, um, you know, within a particular school, if there's five incidents or less, which has often been the case, can't disclose that number because the risk of personally identifying individuals. It's the same thing that the state of Connecticut does when they publish data about schools. And the data on our schools is, is very positive. But there, there are things that we need to address, and I've said that from day one. From March eighteenth through today, in email, in press, in, uh, meetings. And our administrative team has worked very hard on those things to try and improve them.
So, Jeff, I got a little color. So, I'm not saying you're not doing anything. I think you're doing some good things. We're not doing anything, yet. I think it's a discussion we have to have at some point in time. But I do want to run one thing by you. I keep it as general as possible. I'm pretty sure you heard from this parent, they were here March eighteenth. But after the meeting last Thursday, I left Highland at eleven-thirty. I had, I think there were some of the folks there that hung around, you had a parent, but a good, good two and a half hours discussion. And the, the situation there, without naming the school person or anything, is maybe you just did a training with administrators, and it's just starting, so she probably didn't experience this yet. But there's still a situation where their child is being bullied, according to them. Every day, whether it's in a playground, someone walking up to their child and whispering something mean in their ear, whether it's calling them a racist name, other things, they're reporting it, and it's, it doesn't get back to them. I don't know how much of that is FERPA, where the administrator can't tell them if anything was done, but we still have a communication problem. That's not going to get solved in sixty days. I acknowledge that. It's gonna take some time. But I think we heard from folks tonight, though, we, we still have a communication problem in general on this board, you know? Uh, it's solvable. I don't know why we couldn't move the audience section up sooner, so these people didn't have to sit here till now to listen to this. But we did not talk about the March eighteenth meeting until tonight. I think part of frustration from a lot of folks, whether it's good, bad, real, or otherwise, is the fact is, they haven't heard from us. I, I think since March eighteenth, we've had virtually little discussion. I know at the time, back in April, we're still gathering our thoughts, everything that happened. At the forum last week, I didn't feel it was appropriate to get into this level of detail, because I thought it was taking away from the students. I got up there and thought of the good things that were happening. So, what I asked for at the last meeting, I'll ask again, I think it's proven to this board, that perhaps we hold a forum before the school year's over. I don't know if we can do it June sixth, or, I know later we go in June, the most difficult is the graduation and everything. But I think it behooves us in particular that we have a follow-up forum, where, two parts to it. We tell the public, have a discussion on what we want to do with these things, where we stand, the issues are, you know, what we want to get done, like we did tonight, so they can actually hear that. We announce it ahead of time, communicate the crap out of it, so people are aware it's coming. You know, not two days in advance, but maybe a couple of weeks in advance. Give those folks an opportunity that, that came out the eighteenth, to come back and say, yeah, hey, you know what? Jeff did contact. I, I'm better now. I get it. Let's hear from folks that didn't get contacted, whatever. There's other folks, again, you heard of one parent tonight pulling her child out of school. The other parent last night told me they pulled her child out of doodle, by things for the wrong reasons. I don't blame them. They're frustrated. They're not seeing action. And I'm not saying we're gonna jump to action, because being rash can cause other problems, but it behooves us to have this discussion in public. This was not a bad discussion to have tonight. It wasn't necessarily nice or easy discussion, but these are the things that people are asking us to do, where we stand. So, strongly recommend we have a follow-up forum before the school year's over. So, we follow back up around, show that we're listening. I know some of us are. Reflect back what people are saying, and that will help us shape our plan. I think we owe Jeff some inputs to his plan. So, I request some tiny setup for a forum where we can fit it in before the school year's over.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perugini. I mean, I, I guess we will look to see if that's something that we can, uh, schedule before then. I mean, the school year's over on June thirteenth, fourteenth? Okay, um, I, you know, I, I do think that we have to work harder on making sure people feel like, you know, that they are being responded to. I don't think, there, there's never going to be a time when we have a hundred percent satisfaction, because, you know, we just will not get to that point. But I do think that we have to make absolutely sure that if a parent is reaching out to a, you know, principal, teacher, whatever, that there is a response. And people are not feeling like, you know, they're being ignored, or it takes forever to get back to them, and, um, you know, and I, I, I don't, you know, I have no problem talking about getting, you know, putting together a board committee that addresses whatever, you know, like the data, putting together, you know, better information, so we understand what the trends are, and we can figure out if policies are working. I mean, I get it. I mean, that's, of course...
I mean, things of priority. Yeah, I think what Nita said, and what you're putting as a committee, maybe as a start, and see where it goes.
Sure. But I mean, my point, and my point is that, you know, I think we should continue to talk about it.
Agreed.
Um, so, uh, I, you know, I guess there's nothing that we need to do right now. There's nothing for us to do right this second, other than say, Jeff, you know, that looks good. That, you know, reconfiguring that district-wide committee is a good idea. And then, um, just try to, you know, see if we can schedule something for, before the school year ends. So, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for facilitating this conference, this conference, conversation.
Was there anything else that you had for...
I, I want to ask you, since June sixth, I think is our next business meeting?
Yes.
If I'm not mistaken. It's about three weeks out. It'd be nice to know sooner than that if we can actually hold an open forum.
Sure. No, I...
So, that public is aware, that's all. So, I don't know if we can set a deadline and know if it's possible to squeeze one in, if so, when.
Sure. I, we will, Jeff, I'll talk to Jeff. We will get back to everybody on that. So, um, oh, God, we have another thing. We have an item of new business that I would like Mr. Messiana to explain. It's a healthy food certification. This is an annual certification?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a requirement that the Board of Education, um, basically read and pass this motion. Because we participate in the National School Lunch Program, we're required to certify whether or not all food items sold to students will or will not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards. It's our recommendation that we continue with healthy food certification and certify that we will abide by the Connecticut nutrition standards, and just at a very high level, the types of things that we have to ensure that we follow. It's very technical food service. You've heard me say that. You know, the weight of a product, limited sodium, limited fat. We cannot sell sodas, uh, through any of the schools, you know, at least at any school-sponsored event, and certainly in our cafeterias. So, very straightforward. It's just a renewal, um, and we have to certify because we participate in National School Lunch.
Okay. So, I guess I'll just read the motion. So, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute ten dash two one five F, the Cheshire Board of Education certifies that all food and beverage items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July one, two thousand nineteen, through June thirty, twenty twenty. This certification shall include all food and beverages offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable, to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups. And further, the Cheshire Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food and beverage items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. May I have a second?
Sure.
Ms. Harrigan. Any questions, discussions, anything? No. Do I have to reread the motion? Thank you. Okay, so...
Can I just ask, this is, this is exactly like what we go through year to year?
Every year.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, all in favor? It's unanimous among those of us here. Oh, God. Okay, um, I will read the upcoming meetings. Next Finance Committee meeting is Wednesday, May fifteenth, at six-thirty PM at Central Office Boardroom. Curriculum Committee is on Wednesday, May twenty-second, at seven PM in the Central Office Boardroom. Policy Committee will be on Monday, June third, six-thirty PM at Central Office Boardroom. Thursday, June sixth, seven-thirty PM is the next Board of Education Business Meeting. That will be here in Town Council Chambers. Curriculum Committee will also meet on Monday, June tenth, at seven PM, Central Office Boardroom. And the Bo, oh, yeah, Board of Education Business, the fiscal meeting, the year-end fiscal meeting will be on Friday, June twenty-eighth, at seven-thirty AM. So, Memorial Day, schools are closed on May twenty-seventh, and elementary promotions on June twelfth. And June thirteenth is Dodd Promotion and Cheshire High School and Homestown Graduation. I would love to have a motion to adjourn. Anyone? Ms. Sobel, any second. Ms. Harrigan, all in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you.